Alderman Seicho Lopez. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Ervin. Alderman Talafaro. Alderman Reboyas. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Wagispack. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Austin. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Vegas. Alderman Mits. Alderman Spazado. Alderman Nugent. Alderman Vasquez. Alderman Napolitano. Alderman Riley. Alderman Smith. Alderman Tunny. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Kappelman. Alderman Martin. Alderman Osterman. Alderman Haddon. Alderman Silverstein. Your Honor. Alderman Tunny. Alderman Smith. Your Honor, we have a quorum present.
Please rise. The Pledge of Allegiance will be recited by Alderman O'Shea.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. The invocation will be delivered by Reverend Johnny Miller of Mount Vernon Baptist Church on from the West Side.
Thank you. Psalm 24, "The earth is the Lord and the fullness thereof, the world and they that dwell therein; for he has founded upon the sea and established it upon the flood; shall ascend into the hills of the Lord, or who shall stand in his holy place; he that has a clean hand and a pure heart, is not lifted up his soul unto vanity, nor sworn deceitfully, shall receive the blessings of the Lord and the righteousness of the God of his salvation." God our Father, we come to say thank you for your loving kindness. Thank you for allowing us to be tenants in a world that belonged to you. We come now in this council. We thank you for our mayor and the entire city council. We pray now your covering, your mercy, and your grace upon them. We thank you already for what you have done, what you're going to do, and what you are doing. For your word declare that we should be not dismayed, for you are with us and you will strengthen. You will hold us up with your right hand of righteous. We pray now for that hand to hold us up as we go through these holiday season, as we go through trying time, as we get in the midst of everything that will come, your promise. And we stand on your promise. We stand on your word. And God, we believe it and we say thank you and we give you glory. Bless now the continuum of this meeting and you get glory out of all that is done. And we ask all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Will now begin public comment.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. The time remaining for each speaker is shown on the clock on the wall. Pursuant to the Chicago City Council public comment process, time is not transferable to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be available for automatic review at the city clerk's desk. Please remember, this is a forum for public comments and not questions. The first speaker is Mr. Merced Alde.
Buenos dias. My name is Merced Alde and I represent O A Comunidades Unidas, an organization de base located in the northeast of Chicago. I've lived in the vicinity of Albany Park for over 15 years with my family. I support the Coalition Bring Chicago Home to increase the resources of housing and services for people who lack housing, just like the people who live in a shelter for people without a home. Do you consider people without a home those who live in a situation of duplication? They also are considered people without a home. We are living in a duplicative family that lives in Albany Park, including my own family. My brother has been looking for a house with my family over the last few months. Originally, I lived alone, but the cost of rent has been too high. My brother has been looking for a house. The cost of rent these days is higher than paying a mortgage. And the rent for a month is too high. In my apartment, my son shares the room with someone else. This causes a lot of stress in our family because our apartment doesn't have enough space for all of us and it's not designed to do that. My son has also tried to look for a house, but he can't find one that he can pay. This problem doesn't only happen to my family. I'm a friend of many people who are in duplicative life because of the high cost of rent in the vicinity. Not only the costs, but it's much more difficult for the undocumented community. Those undocumented people have fear of talking about their experiences because of the fear that they could be forced to leave or deport. This situation was temporary, but it's now become a normal situation for the family. People have to have the ability to pay a decent apartment, just like they can call it a home. I'm holding firm to support Bring Chicago Home and I hope we can work together to end the lack of housing in Chicago.
Good morning, everyone. I'll be translating for Merced, so she is with the organization Communities United. She's lived in the Albany Park neighborhood for 15 years, and she's in strong support of Bring Chicago Home to increase services and resources for homelessness. She currently lives doubled up with her brother, and she thought the situation would be temporary, but it's lasted several months now. And this is not a problem that only happens to her family. It's a problem that happens across the neighborhood due to the high cost of rent. And...
Thank you, Ms. Alde. Your time has expired. The next speaker is Mr. Theodore Daffin.
Hi. Morning. Okay. My name is Theodore Daffin. I live in Chicago, Rogers Park. I'm disabled because some things happened to me. I'm being severely harassed. I'm sorry, I'm in trouble speaking because of muscle damage in my face and stuff like that. What happened is, a few years ago, I got sick in my house and I called 911 and I was supposed to go to the hospital, but I was kidnapped and held for, turned out for, come up to the hospital for a year and a half, six months in some kind of detention center, and the cops took me there. And as a result, I have like damage in my belly. They were laughing about, they carved like what looks like a woman's vaginal section. And I think they still probably stole my, some organ out of my body. And I used to have a business and they were, before, they were extorting money from me and just harassing me and saying my name, saying I'm doing that. Right now, I'm still being followed around. I can't go to the hospital to get medical help because I go to the hospital, I'm being threatened. They were stopping the bus, like I got caught by the bus somewhere. They're stopping, make the bus wait, and I can't go nowhere. And they're going around to my neighborhood telling people I did stuff and I did do it. I'm like, I'm like, and they're trying to say like I did something, I never did. I'm a self-taught, let's say, product developer. And they're going around saying things and going to meetings I go into and stopping me from making money. And then I have like damage, like a problem with my muscle moving. I have no balance, my brain fogged, and I have, because of some kind of hits, like I have damage, severe damage to my muscle, even to my bone structure. And I wanted them to get some help to stop them from harassing me and lying to me and following me around. My house is also being broken into all the time. Some people are springing stuff on me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Daffin. The next speaker is Ms. Julia Cannon.
Hi, my name is Julia Cannon. I have a six-year-old little boy that's highly autistic, and I also have mental issues, a lot of them. I would like to see the money being used to the clinics that are closed to be reopened. I am, I do get counseling, but they're not doing nothing for me. They're either checking their phone to see who's calling or checking their time and seeing how much time I have. It's only like 20, 30 minutes. That's not enough for me. I'm here today to get help so that way I can help my son because he's the most important thing in my life right now. And if I don't get help, I'm threatened that they're going to take my son away from me. And that cannot happen. I cannot lose my son ever. I almost lost him once because of counseling because he had to have surgery. And one of my counselors backstabbed me and told them that I wasn't, he came, my son's highly autistic, so he came from the back room screaming and crying because he has sensory issues a lot. And I knew what was wrong. It was time for his medication. And my counselor started texting on the phone to her bosses, and her bosses said, hey, tell Julia that if you don't, if she does not take her son to the emergency room, we're going to call DCF. I was on her. I took him, knowing that my son could get sick because it was raining cats and dogs. I went to the emergency room just for the doctor to tell me right in my face, Mom, you know you brought your son in here for nothing? I said, thank you, now go tell them that. I'm tired of being harassed by counselors. They don't give me my time. Then they tell me, oh, it's in the past, leave it alone, forget about it. I've lost seven kids because of my mental illness because of all medication. And that medication killed my kids. I deal with that every day. November 17th and Thanksgiving night will be two different days that I lost my kids. And people that do not have mental illness does not understand what I'm going through. I feel so dead inside because I don't have the help that I need. Please, just give us the money so we can open clinics that have been closed because I need the help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cannon. The next speaker is Ms. Colleen Smith.
Good morning. My name is Colleen Smith, and I'm the Legislative Director for the Illinois Environmental Council. The Illinois Environmental Council represents over 80 environmental organizations from across the state, including groups like Sierra Club, the Little Village Environmental Justice Organization, and Citizens Utility Board. And I'm here today as well on behalf of the Illinois Clean Jobs Coalition, which represents faith, business, consumer, and environmental voices calling for the passage of the Clean Energy Jobs Act. I want to thank the Committee on Environmental Protection for taking up a resolution and for this committee and this council for supporting the Clean Energy Jobs Act today. The City of Chicago showed national leadership earlier this year in committing to 100% renewable energy and has the opportunity here to support historic legislation at the state level to do that as well. The Clean Energy Jobs Act is the future we need for Illinois. It takes the bold steps to address the climate crisis. It fights back against the Trump administration's attempts to fossil fuel subsidies and harm consumers. It helps expand clean transportation options here in Chicago through the electrification of our municipal fleets. And most importantly, it reduces greenhouse gas emissions and protects public health. And also, it will provide opportunities for all communities of Chicago through more job training and wealth-building opportunities. So again, thank the council today for your support for the Clean Energy Jobs Act. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. The next speaker is Ms. Diane Lemus.
My name is Diane Lemus. I'm a volunteer for Communities United. We're a social justice issue organization located on the northwest side of Chicago. Thank you for this opportunity to speak this morning. An issue of great concern is the growing lack of affordable housing options in this city. Our communities have seen a significant amount of economic growth and development in our neighborhood. The result is that many longtime residents can no longer afford and are afford housing and are forced to choose between the lesser of two evils. Stand a neighborhood oftentimes in a small overcrowded apartment in unhealthy living conditions while still finding themselves cost burden. Or uproot themselves and their families from their schools, their faith-based institutions and their community in an effort to find a place to live in a home that they could afford, resulting in displacement. However, the number of rental units in our two-to-four unit properties has declined as the demand for affordable rental housing to low and moderate income families has increased. These two-to-four unit buildings make up over 35% of Chicago's overall rental housing stock. Monies that have been dedicated to preservation of affordable housing in past budgets did not come close to addressing the need for preservation of affordable housing, even though it costs 20% to 40% less than creating a new affordable unit. Instead, past budgets have focused on new development that produce more studio units than family, two-to-four family units. CU is also part of the Bring Chicago Home campaign to end homelessness. As our leaders door-knocked and spoke to renters living in our two-to-four unit buildings, we saw firsthand the number of families that are living doubled up. There is a proposal in, from our state legislators that would change the real estate transfer tax to create $100 million for the budget and still give us $86 million a year to create housing for the homeless. I don't understand why it's so hard for our elected officials to find the courage to tax the rich, but find it so easy to put the burden of taxes on the backs of our working families. As more and more families need to double up so that they can put a roof over their head and remain living in the city, the Bring Chicago Home Coalition is ready to work with the mayor and work with the aldermen to make this happen in Springfield. And again, if the city does not put enough money in the 2020 budget to preserve affordable housing and stop the displacement of working families, the city will only be acceptable for wealthy and homeless.
Thank you, Ms. Lemus. The next speaker is Ms. Estela Diaz. Ms. Estela Diaz.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Estela Diaz. Most of you know me. I'm speaking about mental health issues. I was raped at the age of six, and I've been dealing with that. And I'm also survivor of domestic violence at the age of 16. And a lot of things happen around my life. I'm 40 years old now, and it's hard to me to speak about this because, as you see, it's more worse cases than me. And that's why I'm standing here in front of you to please ask you for reopening the clinics. You see, she received a help. It's only 20 minutes. It's not enough time. And then even paying attention to her because they treat her like customers, not a human being. We are not a number. We are persons who struggle every single day, living with a body who tries to survive, but a brain trying to die. This is our day, every single day. I just get up, it's hard for me sometimes, take a shower, take care of my kids. I work as a health promoter in schools. I worked as a volunteer for seven years in schools. I've been seeing kids trying to speak up because adults like us don't have the voice for them. And this has to stop. Think of your childrens, has to be your childrens, your grandchildren's. It's very, very, very sad outside. Some of the comments I've been hearing that they speak with expertise, well, nobody's talking to me on the streets, asking me how I feel, how is my day today? I don't have enough time, 20 minutes, to say all the struggles I've been dealing with. I'm a mom of five. I've been working so hard with my husband to raise those kids in the most healthy environment. But how I can do that if I'm not well? Maybe you can't see because mental illness is not like coughing or flu or a broken leg, but it's real, exists, it's not in my mind. You know, it's, it's... It's very, very sad standing here right now, asking for health, for mental illness. I'm not supposed to be here. I'm supposed to be in my home, taking care of the kids, not standing here asking.
Thank you, Ms. Diaz. The next speaker is Ms. Sandy Schneller.
Greetings, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'm Sandy Schneller. The last census data showed that the poverty levels dropped for five consecutive years, estimating household incomes that grew about 11%. Now, this was between the years of 2014 and 2018. Why is this? What is happening to the poor people in Chicago? Well, we have the downtown economic boom, we have gentrification, but the major reason is the exodus of poor folks here in Chicago, and they're going to other states. Of the 77 communities that we have here in Chicago, the top 10 with households living below the poverty level are communities that are on the south and west sides of the city. Now, the governor has rolled out his $45 billion five-year budget plan for Illinois, and in it, he spoke of bringing prosperity and opportunity to every corner of Illinois. As city leaders, you must ask him to start with the west of the south side corners of Chicago first. We must bring together, bring economic development to these forgotten areas. We must look to increase the quality of life and welfare for all individuals and all families. Now, the success of a community's economic development approach focuses on proximity and access to parks, open spaces, recreational opportunities, schools, employment opportunities, and quality housing. All of these things have a great impact on the intrinsic of the community. And as leaders of this great city, you must roll up your sleeves and get to work to bring up the poverty-stricken areas because only together can we get to equality. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schneller. All speakers who have timely submitted witness slips for the public comment period have been heard.
This concludes the public comment period.
Tribute to the late Richard Pfeiffer, a resolution for her honor the mayor. Whereas the members of this chamber were deeply saddened to learn of the death of October 6, 2019, at age 70, of Richard William Pfeiffer, coordinator of the annual Chicago Pride Parade since 1974, and a member of Chicago's Gay and Lesbian Hall of Fame. And whereas Richard Pfeiffer headed the Chicago Gay Alliance, which operated the city's first gay community center, then founded the Gay Activist Coalition at Harold Washington College, which was the first LGBTQ group at a city colleges of Chicago campus. And whereas during the mid-1970s, Richard Pfeiffer served as the president of Gay Horizons, now Center on Halsted, the largest LGBTQ community center and social agency in the Midwest. And whereas Richard Pfeiffer served as coordinator of the Gay Speakers Bureau since 1972, facilitating and participating in speaking engagements at high schools, universities, churches, and civic groups throughout the city. And whereas Richard Pfeiffer continued his activism as a volunteer writer, penning a monthly column for three years for Chicago Gay Crusader and a weekly column of gay life through the late 1970s. And whereas in 1985, Mayor Harold Washington appointed Richard Pfeiffer as a founding member of the Committee on Gay and Lesbian Issues, and he was reappointed by Mayor Richard M. Daley to serve as the Advisory Council on Gay and Lesbian Issues. And whereas Richard Pfeiffer coordinated this year's Chicago Pride Parade, drawing hundreds of thousands of spectators, the most well-attended year in the event's history and making 50, marking 50 years since the parade was first organized. And whereas a staunch activist who fought for representation and empowered LGBTQ people in Chicago to live openly, Richard Pfeiffer will always be remembered as a legendary advocate, a mentor, and a friend to many. And whereas Richard Pfeiffer is survived by his beloved husband of 48 years, Tim Frye, and countless friends in the LGBTQ community throughout Chicago, now therefore be it resolved that we, the mayor and members of the city council of the city of Chicago, assemble this 13th day of November 2019, do hereby honor the life and memory of Richard Pfeiffer and be it further resolved that suitable copies of this resolution be presented to the family of Richard Pfeiffer as a token of our honor, gratitude, and utmost respect.
The chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move the temporary suspension of the rules for the immediate consideration of the resolution.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Tunny.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to support this and this resolution and to honor the life of Richard Pfeiffer. I see his partner, Tim Frye, is here together. 48 years is a testament of why marriage equality has passed this state, thank God. But I wanted to talk about Richard's contributions to the LGBT community since the mid-'70s, where it certainly was not cool to be out and proud, so to speak. And what Richard and others have done is to make sure that equal rights for LGBT individuals and families are the law of the land. And it is amazing to see his work, not just as the... And it is amazing to see his work, not just as the organizer of the Gay Pride Parade, which he's done, I don't know how many years, ever since I've been born, basically, and to work with him as a quiet voice of reason and a staunch defender of our right to be full and inclusive members of our city and our society. I had the opportunity to know Richard, at least since 1979, and more intimately as the alderman for the Gay Pride Parade that has gone through our community since its inception. And, you know, it was kind of interesting over the years as this parade went from maybe a couple of hundred to a couple of hundred thousand to a million in his stewardship is that he remained calm, he remained organized. I know he and his partner, Tim, have traveled all over the world to look at how parades are operated and to try to take the best practices from around the country. I know it was fairly controversial that we moved this parade and extended it to, up to the Wilson, I'm sorry, the Broadway and Wilson corridor. But I just recall Richard never losing his cool and understanding that the mission was to expand not only our rights but the parade and to really be that quiet voice of activism. And that's kind of a misnomer, but he really was a quiet voice of activism, and he was able to really navigate the political circles from not only Harold Washington but through the Daley administration and the Emanuel and now the Lightfoot administration. So we're very, very proud of Richard and his contributions to the LGBT Chicago community, and we look forward to continuing to work with you, Tim, as the parade continues to expand, as does our activism. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Kapelman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too stand and support this resolution. Back in the days when Richard did this, there was so much discrimination. I, and it was a rite of passage for our members of the LGBTQ community to march in the parade. That was, that was the signal that they've really come out. My first time to march in the Pride Parade was 1988. I did it knowing that I could be fired. Actually, I did leave the teaching profession because a colleague of mine was fired, so I knew it was a matter of time that I'd have to leave the teaching profession. And my colleague was fired for just observing the Pride Parade. We've come such a long, long ways, but it's still a rite of passage for many members of the LGBTQ community to march in that parade. And for someone who oftentimes feared for my own life, to march in that parade was so exhilarating, it was so liberating. I still remember once, as I was getting ready to line up, someone called me a GD faggot, and I turned around, looked at him, and said, "It's not your day today, it's mine." And I was able to do that because of what, all the work that Richard Pfeiffer did for all of us in the Pride Parade. Richard was a very humble man, very behind the scenes. He did not like being in the limelight, but he did this because he knew it was so exhilarating for him and for you and for members of LGBT community. It was an incredible experience for all of us. So I, this next time when I marched in the parade, I will be thinking of Richard. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Osterman.
Tim, I also want to rise up and remember Richard. He's been a leader in the fight for LGBTQ rights for many, many years. My mother, years ago, worked to get the Human Rights Ordinance passed, and Richard and many others at that time fought for it. The parade, and I've been in elected office almost 20 years, I remember starting at a time when not a lot of elected officials marched. And now, you know, there's more people that march than don't march. And I think it's, it's an amazing thing that he has helped create this environment where gay, straight can come out and celebrate freedom and human rights. And it's an amazing showcase for our city as it's grown and grown and grown. The other thing is that not just Chicagoans, but people come from all over the country to come here to celebrate, you know, the pride. And I think it's, he's helped foster that. As someone who's marched and seen the chaos of the parade, I don't know how he did it, I don't know how you guys did it, I'm quite frankly glad it's in Tom's and James's word. But it's an amazing thing, and I think who Richard was goes beyond the parade, it's the little things, it's the thousand acts of kindness, it's his advocacy that we'll live on. So God bless.
Thank you, Alderman. Along with this council and our entire city, I was heartbroken to learn about Richard's passing. As you've heard and you know, Richard was a tireless LGBTQ+ rights activist. His boundless energy helped him to lead countless advocacy groups over the past decades, including the Chicago Gay Alliance, the Mayor's Advisory Council, the Gay Speakers Bureau, and many others. But perhaps the one contribution that Chicagoans will most remember Richard for is Chicago Pride Parade. And I think it's, you've heard from the other aldermen, this isn't just a parade, this is a celebration of who we are as a city and our values, and people literally come from all over the country and all over the world to join in the Pride Parade. And it has created, I think, an opportunity for young people, to see people live their authentic lives, be who they are. And that is because of the work that Richard and you put into this. It's also a tremendous economic engine for our city, and that legacy will live on. For nearly 50 years, you all worked to create this incredible legacy, and that hard work helped to become the overwhelming celebration and love and acceptance of what it is today. And Alderman Osterman is right, back in the day, you always looked to see who was out there. Now you look to see who's not there because people recognize that this is a celebration of humanity and love, and it cuts across all demographics and all populations. Richard fought to ensure that others had this kind of opportunity, and Chicago is a better place because of him. He was a living example of the power of speaking out and fighting for what you know is right. And our thoughts are with you, Tim, as you navigate this difficult time without him, but know that you have many friends and family and fellow activists who stand with you and will be there to support you in this difficult challenge. Let's continue Richard's work. Let's ensure that our city remains a beacon of hope and continues to be a place where every person could be proud to walk down the street unafraid and proud. Thank you very much. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move adoption of the resolution by a rising vote.
Members of the council, please rise. Other resolutions, Madam Clerk.
A resolution from our honor the mayor, Alderman Maldonado. Whereas World Pancreatic Cancer Day is November 21, 2019, is a time to bring people from around the world together to highlight the need for greater awareness, funding, and research for pancreatic cancer. And whereas while death rates are declining from many other cancers, death rates are increasing for pancreatic cancer with an estimated of 1,184 expected to die from the disease every day worldwide. And whereas pancreatic cancer is the lowest survival rate of all major cancers, with approximately 5% of those diagnosed in the United States surviving five years. And whereas estimated that in 2025, 557,688 new cases of pancreatic cancer will be diagnosed globally. And whereas on World Pancreatic Cancer Day, the global pancreatic cancer community will unite to fight against the world's toughest cancer and raise awareness about the symptoms and risk of pancreatic cancer and the urgent need for early detection. And whereas there is no standard screening test for pancreatic cancer, which is why it is essential to know the symptoms and risks and educate family and friends. And whereas early diagnosis is the key for attaining successful outcomes in the treatment of pancreatic cancer, patients diagnosed in time for surgery are more likely to live five years and beyond, and the sooner one is diagnosed, the higher the chance one will be eligible for surgery and the sooner one can receive treatment. Enroll in a clinical trial and get the support that will empower that person to fight and survive this disease. And where it is important to raise awareness about pancreatic cancer on social media by following World Pancreatic Cancer Day on Twitter and Instagram at World Pancreatic and on Facebook at facebook.com/WorldPancreaticCancerDay and posting using the hashtags WPCD and Demand Better. And whereas Chicagoans can also make a difference by advocating for more government funding of pancreatic cancer research, especially for achieving early detection. And whereas through a combined effort, Chicagoans can bring greater attention, awareness, and better outcomes to this deadly disease than those affected by it. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the mayor and members of the City Council of the City of Chicago, assemble this 13th day of November 2019, do hereby recognize World Pancreatic Cancer Day and its importance to the fighting the world's toughest cancer.
Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move the temporary suspension of the rules for the immediate consideration of the resolution.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Maldonado.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for presenting this resolution before the City Council of the City of Chicago about World Pancreatic Cancer Day. It will be celebrated on November 21st. I think that 50% of these, of the members of the City Council are aware that my wife, my late wife, was victim of pancreatic cancer. It is one of the most devastating forms of cancer that any family can experience. In our case, in our family, from the time that my wife was misdiagnosed with ovarian cancer, then later to learn that she had pancreatic cancer, she was with us six weeks. Six weeks is not time enough so that you can prepare for the inevitable of seeing your wife leaving your children and leaving you. Every single day that my wife was in the hospital or trying to recover, I was getting bad news, upon bad news from the medical personnel at the hospital. And we couldn't think about a way to communicate with, to our children of what was going to happen. Contrary to many other forms of cancer, we have, you have much more time to prepare your family for what's going to happen. When it comes to pancreatic cancer, you have no time. And the most painful experience that I have ever lived in my life was when I have to tell my children that Mom, Mommy, most likely she was going to leave us very soon. In less than 24 hours, she was gone. And so that's why I think it's important for us to take a moment, and next week on the 21st, use your social media platform and promote Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day so that hopefully in the future, not too distant future, we can find means for early detection that do not exist today. My children raised $9,400 million in $9,400,000 in four months to be able to donate it to an organization that would do early detection for pancreatic cancer. And still today, we have not been able to find that research organization that would do that. And so, in memory of my wife, please do that next week. Today is three years, 10 months, and 12 days. Thank you.
I think as Alderman Maldonado's very personal testimony underscores, this continues to be a very difficult cancer. Unlike other cancers that have massive research and development budgets and where progress is being made, pancreatic cancer remains one of the few for which that's not true. Alderman Mits.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have to agree with Alderman Maldonado. I remember when your wife passed away, it was like opening wounds over again because shortly before she passed, I had just dealt with my mother, who had pancreatic cancer and it had taken her life. So I had to spend time, when I first learned of that pancreatic cancer, how much time she had left. I couldn't share that with family members because they didn't understand and they didn't even want to believe me. But I knew that it was something I had to deal with. And thank God he gave the strength that I was able to work and take care of her at home. And I have a lot of sisters and brothers. It's just that one sometime that's always there, and there was nothing in the world that I wouldn't do for her. The times that she had left to make them be the best days of their life, I was the one that was going to give it to her, no matter what it took. And today, I didn't understand what it was, but to be there and know she's at peace, and you know, they know. She would ask me, "Do you think I'm ever be able to walk again?" I said to her, "How am I going to answer that?" I couldn't answer. I just had to wait until the time. She did not want to be in a nursing home. And I think the support of my colleagues, because I was going through some difficult times. Man, you can deal with a lot of things, but when you're dealing with your mother, your wife, your immediate family, and you have to put up with it, it's something to look at. And so I certainly applaud you for wanting to be able to dedicate a day. That's something that we can make sure that we do all the studies and the tests that I'm running. Is it something generic? I never heard of it before, but I'm hoping that it's not and that we can find cure for it. So thank you. I do feel your pain. I would not let this pass by. Anytime I can recognize the life of a true soldier. Anybody that has 16 kids, I know they're a soldier. So thank God for her, and she led a wonderful life. Thank you, Alderman Maldonado.
Thank you, Alderman. So I think what we need to do is, as Alderman Maldonado has said, make sure that we take the opportunity to recognize the people who are suffering. This is a difficult disease. It avoids symptoms until it's too late. And the devastating story that you told of your wife having six weeks for you and your wife and your children to understand the severity of the disease and how quickly she was gone, unfortunately, that's a story that is told by many families whose loved ones become sick with this terrible form of cancer. So everything that we can do to continue to raise awareness and demand additional funding and research, we will do as a city. Thank you. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move adoption of the honor of this resolution I'd already disposed of.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Thank you, Alderman Mitchell.
I now move return to the regular order of business.
Communications.
Communications from our honor the mayor to the honorable the City Council of the City of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Budget Director, I transmit here with the 2020 Revenue Ordinance. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Budget Director, I transmit here with the fiscal year 2020 tax levies. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Budget Director... Ladies and gentlemen, request the Budget Director, I transmit here with revised tax levy for fiscal year 2019. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Chief Financial Officer, I transmit here with the Bond Refunding Ordinance. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Budget Director, I transmit with here the 2020 Management Ordinance. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Budget Director, I transmit here with the 2020 Code Corrections Ordinance. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Budget Director, I transmit here with an ordinance allocating motor fuel tax funds. An associated authorization of, for an intergovernmental agreement with Chicago Transit Authority. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with ordinances authorizing a scope of services budget and management agreement for various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here ordinance authorizing Class 6B tax status for various properties. Your favorable consideration of these ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Superintendent of Police, I transmit here with an ordinance amending various provisions of the municipal code regarding cannabis-related penalties. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Public Safety. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Transportation, I transmit here with an ordinance regarding alley access at 1446-50 West Berry. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. I City Clerk Anna Valencia hereby inform the City Council that the following documents were filed in my office. A communication removing automatic sponsors from a written request for committee hearing previously filed in accordance with Council Rule 39. A communication with the Budget Director regarding the revised estimated 2019 amended in 2020 aggregate property tax levies. And Inspector General's advisory regarding the Department of Streets and Sanitation, Bureau of Forestry inefficiency in providing tree trimming services. I City Clerk Valencia also inform the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on October 16, 2019, and which required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one of more newspapers, were published in the pamphlet form on November 13, 2019, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal of Proceedings of the City Council of the City of Chicago. I also inform the City Council that the ordinance is authorizing the imposition of tax levies, approval of year 2020 budgets, and authorization of service provider agreements for special service area numbers 1-2015 and 2, which were passed by the City Council on October 16, 2019, and which were requested to be published in special pamphlet form, were published in special pamphlet form on October 22, 2019. I also inform the City Council that the ordinance is authorizing the imposition of tax levies, approval of year 2020 budgets, authorization of service provider agreements for special service area numbers 7, 10, 13, 20, 22, 31, and 39, which were passed by the City Council on October 16, 2019, and which were requested to be published in special pamphlet form, were published in special pamphlet form on October 23, 2019. I also inform the City Council that the ordinance is authorizing the imposition of tax levies, approval of year 2020 budgets, and authorization of service provider agreements for special service area numbers 44 and 64 were passed by City Council on October 16, 2019, and which were requested to be published in pamphlet form, were published in special pamphlet form on October 24, 2019. I also transmit here with the following miscellaneous communications and reports requiring City Council action. Zoning reclassification of particular areas, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Claims against the City of Chicago, which are referred to the Committee on Finance. Recommendation by Commission on Chicago Landmarks for Designation of Claremont Cottage District on Portia South Claremont Avenue as Chicago Landmark, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Recommendation by Commission on Chicago Landmarks for Designation of Promontory Apartments at 5530-5532. South Shore Drive as a Chicago Landmark, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmark, and Building Standards. Recommendation by Commission on Chicago Landmarks for Approval of Permit Application for Demolition of Non-Contributing Building at 2132 North Halsett Street at Armored-Tech Halsted Landmark District, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Recommendation by Commission on Chicago Landmarks for Approval of a Permit Application for Demolition of a Non-Contributing Building at 911-921 West Fulton Market-217-219 North Sangamon Street in the Fulton Randolph Market District, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards.
Committee reports. Alderman Vegas back.
Madam President, reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which met November 12, 2019. Item number one is a communication authorizing the independent firm Deloitte &amp; Tush, LLP, and a consortium of minority and women-owned accounting firms to perform the audit for the City of Chicago fiscal year ending December 31, 2019. Madam President, it's my understanding there are a couple of Aldermen that wish to make a comment on this subject.
Alderman Dow.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to bring to your attention that Deloitte &amp; Tush have had this contract for over 20 years, or 20 years at the most. And the MBE/WBE involvement in this particular contract is very limited, with MBE companies getting about 30% of the deal. I just wanted to bring this to your attention. I know this is something that you care deeply about, and just wanted to raise this for you.
Alderman Vegas.
Thank you, Madam President. During the debate in Finance Committee, issues arose that spoke to the fact that this firm has held the contract for nearly 20 years. According to accounting and auditing practices, that's not a good practice and that we should be following as a city. Also mentioned during the debate was the fact that 30% went to minority and women-owned firms, as my colleague Alderman Pat Dow mentioned. In the third largest city, there's no reason why we cannot have minority or women-owned firms leading an audit for this great city of Chicago. So, Madam President, I look forward to working with you and in your administration and getting an RFP out there that will speak to having minority and women-owned firms leading this and not just our community getting crumbs. Thank you, Madam President.
What I can tell you is that is... Alderman Irvin, sorry.
I heard the debate on this. I think one thing that we have to consider is that actually being a former auditor myself, there are only four firms in the country that the bond community, the rating agencies looked toward, and those were the big six when I was in accounting, and now there are four. I understand the challenge that exists. There are some things that I believe that we could work with Deloitte on as far as the partners that lead the engagement, the people that make up the engagement team. But I do believe that switching out wholesale from one of the big four firms may have a detrimental impact to us as a city going forward. So I think in good conscience, we can look at the issue, but I think that trying to take out one of those big four firms may have a much more larger impact on our city and on our financial statements than what we honestly know about. So while we can expand some of the other work, we still need to have one of those big four accounting firms signing off on our audited financial statements on an annual basis.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Harris?
I do want to applaud you for working with us on this and for making the consideration to look at these contracts that we've held for very long, for over 20 years, and some aspects of some of these contracts, to take a look at them and see how we can do RFP and revamp them and work with us on people who have been longstanding. And that I just, I'm in total degree is that one company should not have a contract for 20 years. So thank you so much for your leadership on that.
As we, as some of you know, we spoke about this issue, I am also concerned about one auditor having a contract for 20 years. And Alderman Irving is right that there's a finite number of auditing firms that have the capacity to be able to audit a budget as complicated as the City of Chicago. Nonetheless, I look forward to working with members of the council to put this out for bid next year, and we will make sure that we won't continue to see a decrease in the amount of MBE/WBE participation, and that can't be met by flying someone in from out of state. There are plenty of people here on the ground in Chicago who can do this work, and they can partner together with one of the other auditing firms and will get that done. Chairman Vegas back.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say, I want to thank my colleagues for the robust argument, even though we could have placed this on file immediately. I'm glad that our colleagues jumped in and discussed this issue, which has been going on for far too long. So I look forward to working with each one of them as well to address this RFP. So this item will be placed on file with the City Clerk. Item number two, Madam President, is an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Housing to enter into and execute a redevelopment agreement, to enter into and execute a loan agreement, and to approve qualified Donative Tax Housing Credit Program assistance with Roosevelt Road Veterans Housing, LP, ASH5 LLC, and a Safe Haven Foundation for the acquisition of city-owned property. This item was approved by the committee by voice vote, and if no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move to concur with the recommendation of the committee by a roll call vote.
Madam Clerk?
Alderman Laspada. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Dow. Alderman King. Alderman Hairston. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Harris. Alderman Beal. Alderman Zalowski-Garza. Alderman Thompson. Alderman Cardness. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Burke. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Moore. Alderman Curtis. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Tabarez. Alderman Scott. Alderman Cicho Lopez. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Irvin. Alderman Talafaro. Alderman Rebouyas. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Wagaspack. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Austin. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Vegas. Alderman Mits. Alderman Spisato. Alderman Nugent. Alderman Vasquez. Alderman Napolitano. Alderman Riley. Alderman Smith. Alderman Tunny. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Kappelman. Alderman Martin. Alderman Osterman. Alderman Haddon. Alderman Silverstein.
There are 45 yays and one nay. The motion passes. Alderman Thompson on the motion to reconsider.
Madam President, motion to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. The motion fails. Alderman Vegas back.
Item number three is regarding monthly settlements through the Law Department and will be placed on file with the clerk. Items four through six consist of authorizations for the payment of various small claims against the city, denial of payment of various small claims against the city, and orders authorizing the payment of senior citizen rebate sewer claims. If there is no objection, I ask that these items be placed on the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, this concludes the report of the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for your Committee on Aviation, for which a meeting was held on Friday, November 8, 2019. Aviation Committee had two items up for consideration. Police Agreement of Data Communications Equipment between the Chicago Department of Aviation and the United States Customs and Border Protection for federal inspection purposes at Chicago's Midway International Airport. A second lease agreement, 02019-8101. Concessions, Lease and License Agreement with Taking Flight Concessions, LLC, for provision of dual-purpose concession and vending services at Chicago's O'Hare International Airport Multimodal Facility. These items passed by all committees members present. If there are no objections, Madam President, I move for passage of these items by the same roll call as item number one on the Committee on Finance, and the same motion reconsider if there are no objections. That concludes my report.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you.
Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Alderman Vegas.
Madam President, members of the City Council, reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, which held a meeting on October 10, 2019. The Committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following items. Items one through six are a series of appointments to various special service areas. Emil Mahler to SSA number four. Chad Jaszewski to SSA number 33. Rebecca Dole to SSA 33. Wayne Janik to SSA 33. Rita Ortiz to SSA 59. And Julio Gomez to SSA 59. I move passage of these items by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item seven is a call for public hearings on the enlargement of special service area number 50. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item eight is a call for public hearings on the enlargement of special service area number 51. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Items 10 through 23 and 25 through 28 are a series of scope of services budget and management agreements for various special service areas. SSA number four. SSA number five. SSA number 18. SSA number 21. SSA number 25. SSA 24. SSA number 26. SSA number 29. SSA number 33. SSA 34. SSA 35. SSA 38. SSA number 55. SSA 19. SSA 60. SSA 71. SSA 43. And SSA 54. I move passage of these items by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Items nine and 24, scope of services budget and management agreements for SSA number three, the 63rd Street Commission, and SSA number 59, the 59th Street Commission, respectively have been held in committee. Item 29 is a direct introduction for the restructuring of loan and subordination agreement for Renaissance St. Luke, LP, regarding 1501 to 1515 West Belmont Avenue. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Committee on Environmental Protection in... Pardon me.
I'd like to be recorded as, yes, on the second. Committee on Finance, please.
So reflected, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Committee on... I'm sorry. Alderman Vegas.
Madam President, I forgot to mention that 0219, Service, Special Service Area Number 59, 021994, Special Service Area Number 59. 080... A0219-93, Special Service Area Number 59. 02019-8375, Special Service Area Number Three, is a list of Rule 14s by Alderman Burke. You abstain from voting on this item within the preceding 12 months. Alderman Burke practiced law with other attorneys in a law firm. Other attorneys in the firm represented greater... Other attorneys in the firm represented Greater Southwest Development Corporation within the preceding 12 months in property tax appeals at the Cook County Assessor, the Cook County Board of Review related to various properties.
Does that conclude your report?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy. Alderman Cardenas.
Madam President, members of the city council, reporting for your Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy, which held a meeting Monday, October 21st, 2019, to consider one item, Substitute Resolution 2019-747. The resolution calls on the governor and the general assembly to pass the Clean Energy Jobs Act, also known as CJA, which is a bill that paves the way for a transformative clean energy industry. This substitute resolution passed unanimously by all committee members present. As a lead sponsor of the resolution, I would like to say, in addition, that, just obviously you read about this, the last week, the Trump administration began the withdrawal process to pull the United States from the US, from the UN Paris Climate Accord. With that said, at the local level, there's never been a more urgent time to act on climate change. Earlier this year, the council passed the following, pledged the following resolutions. Run all municipal buildings on 100% renewable energy by 2025. Run all buildings on 100% renewable energy by 2035. And electrify CTA's entire fleet by 2040. I am concerned that the city of Illinois is not prioritizing legislation that favors a clean economy. At the current rate, the city of Illinois is projected to run only on 10% renewable energy by 2050. We cannot be complacent about emitting greenhouse gases, and if we miss these targets, Illinois climate is projected to permanently shift to that of Texas. Imagine that. In report by United Nations, the world has 11 years to stop emitting carbon dioxide, CO2, to reach carbon neutrality by 2050. CJA sets us on the right path with the goal for the state to run 100% renewable by 2050, ship the carbon-free power sector by 2030, and reduce gas in diesel vehicles from the transportation sector, and create good paying jobs, and foster economic opportunity for all of Illinois. Over 20 Aldermen signed on to the resolution. I welcome any other of my colleagues to do so at this time, and if so, I'm happy to yield the floor. Anybody wanting to comment on this, CJA. If there's no objection, I move passage of this item by the last most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and its associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider. That concludes my report.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Thank you, Alderman. Committee on License and Consumer Protection, Alderman Mits.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the city council. I'm reporting for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. We held a meeting on November 6th, 2019, to consider the following ordinance. 02019-8027 was an ordinance prohibiting peddling and portioning of the 3rd and 4th Ward, Alderman King and Alderman Dow. Item number 02019-8021 and 02019-8006 was two ordinance to amend the municipal code designating precincts of the 11th and 13th Ward as restricted residential zone prohibiting addition of shared housing, Alderman Thompson and Alderman Quinn. Three ordinance regarding moratoriums in various wards, the 9th, the 12th, and the 35th Ward. These recommendations were concurred in by a voice vote of the members of the License Committee on November 6th, 2019. Madam President, I move that the city council concur in the recommendation of the License Committee by the same roll call as item number one on the Committee on Finance report and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, Alderman Burnett.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, for which a meeting was held on Tuesday, November 12th, 2019. Before the committee, there were 198 items. There were 188 routine items that passed and 10 routine items that did not pass. There was one item that was introduced by Alderman Laspada of the 1st Ward. A resolution to call a hearing regarding the e-scooter pilot program that was re-referved back to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. If there is no objections, I move for the passage of these ordinances in the omnibus. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Committee on Transportation in Public Way, Chairman Brookins.
Good morning, Madam President. Reporting on your Committee for Transportation in the Public Way, a meeting which was held on November 5th, 2019. The following ordinances were passed by a majority of the members present. On page two, item one and two are two great mayoral appointments of Danielle Castle and Ivan Solis, who are seated in the box, to the Illinois International Port District Board. Pages three through 21 include 228 ordinances for grants and privileges introduced by local Aldermen from wards 1 through 5, 7, 8, 10 through 14, 16 through 23, 25, 27 through 37, 40 through 42, 44 through 47, 49, and 50. On page 22 includes 19 ordinances for canopies introduced by local Aldermen from wards 1 through 3, 5, 12, 20, 23, 25 through 27, 30, 32, 41 through 45. On page 23 includes two ordinances for sidewalk cafes introduced by local Aldermen from wards 27 and 38. On pages 24 and 25 include 18 ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by local Aldermen from wards 2, 12, 22, 24, 27, 28, 30, 32, 36, 45, 47, and 50. On page 26 includes two transportation ordinances located in the 1st and 42nd Ward. On page 27 includes one subdivision ordinance located in the 4th Ward. I will also note that Alderman Burke has abstained pursuant to Rule 14 on the following item number 8196 located at 4597 South Archer. Item number 8417 located at 4597 Archer. Item 8256 located at 1653 West Congress Parkway. Item 8098 located at 131 North Clinton. Item 8330 at 221 East Huron. Item 8331 located at 259 East Erie. Item 8332 located at 221 East Huron. Item 8302 located at 141 West Jackson. And item 8031 located at 1400 West Washington. Alderman Burke sustains for voting. Within the preceding 12 months, Alderman Burke practiced law with attorneys in the law firm. Other attorneys in the firm represented property owners within the preceding 12 months in the property tax appeal to the Cook County Assessors, Cook County Board of Review, and the Illinois Department of Revenue regarding the property. Your Honor, if nobody cares to comment on our two final appointments or anything else, I would ask if there's no objection to movement of the passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. And congratulations, Ms. Melton and Mr. Solis. Welcome aboard. Thank you. Chairman Garza.
Pardon me, Madam Chairman. I felt compelled to welcome them, seeing that the port is, only encompasses the 10th Ward. It's only right that I give them a warm welcome. So, thank you, Madam President, and members of city council. Reporting for your Committee on Workforce Development, which met on Tuesday, November 5th, 2019, there were two items before the committee, which the committee recommended passage by voice boat. Item number one was A 2019-69, the appointment of Salma Madrono Novak as a member of the Human Resources Board. If there is no one that would like to speak on this item, I move due passage by the last most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. Item number two was 02019-7985, interim agreements with Police Benevolent and Protective Association of Illinois, Unit 156. Sergeants, lieutenants, and captains. If there is no one that would like to speak on this item, I move passage by the last most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. This concludes my report for the Committee on Workforce Development.
Thank you. We're now moving to the matters on the agreed calendar. Alderman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. I've received from Clerk Valencia a total of 95 items proposed for the agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, and tributary resolutions for the following 13, Alderman. Alderman Brian Hopkins. Alderman Pat Dow. Alderman Marty Quinn. Alderman Edward Burke. Alderman Raymond Lopez. Alderman Walter Burnett. Alderman Stephanie Coleman. Alderman Derek Curtis. Alderman Felix Cardena. Alderman Rosanna Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Kerry Austin. Alderman Emma Mits. And Alderman Harry Osterman. I move passage of the agreed calendar.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardona.
Thank you, Madam President. As to suspend the rules, I would like to introduce a resolution for ASPIDA.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
ASPRA of Illinois was established in 1968 as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization in response to the growing social and educational needs of the Puerto Rican and Latino community in Chicago. Whereas ASPRA of Illinois mission is to empower the Puerto Rican and Latino community through advocacy in the education and leadership development of its youth. And whereas ASPRA of Illinois approach is multi-systematic and addresses all family members' needs in collaboration with other social service agencies, healthcare providers, public schools, higher education institutions, and government agencies. And whereas ASPRA of Illinois is committed to elevating the self-esteem of all students through leadership development and fostering their personal growth by encouraging lifelong learning. And whereas ASPRA of Illinois understands the value of all students appreciating and understanding their cultural heritage to build self-esteem and pave the way to academic excellence. And whereas ASPRA of Illinois is committed to teaching students the value of improving the quality of life of others and learning to be compassionate and understanding. And whereas ASPRA of Illinois embraces all aspects of human diversity and values its necessity to ensure a vibrant learning environment. And whereas ASPRA of Illinois is committed to establishing partnerships with universities, private sector, nonprofit, and community organizations that will enhance the student's school experience and their leadership development. And whereas ASPRA of Illinois serves over 3,000 students and their families every year through its school and youth development programs. And whereas ASPRA of Illinois has helped thousands of low-income students attend college. And whereas ASPRA of Illinois has helped numerous families across support services. Now therefore, be it resolved, we, the mayor, and members of the city council do hereby proclaim Wednesday, November 13th, 2019, to be ASPRA Day in the city of Chicago and encourage all citizens to support ASPRA of Illinois efforts.
Thank you, Madam President. This morning, I rise to congratulate ASPIDA on 50 years of service to the Puerto Rican community and Latino. During these years, ASPIDA has sponsored ASPIDA clubs, academic clubs, and students of all four public schools. They operate strong after-school programs and enhance students' academic, social, emotional, emotional development. At ASPIDA, they're dedicated to developing the next generation of leaders. In 1968, ASPIDA was the community's solution needs for Puerto Rican and Latino students. ASPIDA has always been an incubator for development of Latino leaders. One of these, one of these council floors are two of my colleagues, Aspirante Alderman Raboyas and Alderman Mike Rodriguez. Among these Aspirantes alums, ASPIDA counts on Chicago Board Chairman Miguel Devaia and State Senator Iris Martinez and Billy Ocasio, CEO of the National Puerto Rican Museum of Arts and Culture among thousand Aspirantes. To be Aspirante, to follow means, awareness, analysis, and action. Today, I welcome the board chair Fernando Grillo and chief of staff Edgar Lopez, and more importantly, the ASPIDA students and staff who are here this morning. I thank ASPIDA for their last 50 years of service of Chicago. I pray in God's speed as they embark the next 50 years. Let's give them a warm welcome.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Raboyas.
Madam President, thank you, Madam President. I too stand in support of this resolution by my esteemed colleague of the 31st Ward. ASPIDA, to aspire, has brought a wonderful change to our community. At first, we met some challenges. Yes, we did. But because of the board members we have within, today, the ASPIDA students is seen as a school with pride, a school with scholars, and a school that competes at a national You make us proud. And in closing, I want to publicly thank Fernando Grillo, who stood up as a stalwart from day one. Thank you. We're proud of you. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Maldonado.
Thank you, Madam President, and I'm very proud to be part of this resolution in supporting ASPIDA. I've known ASPIDA for many, many years. When I first came to Chicago, I did work for a very short period of time at ASPIDA as a counselor. Prior to that, my brother, as he was a teacher at Lakeview High School, he also was a trainer for future Aspirantes. And I know, I also know that Maria Cerda was one of the founders of ASPIDA as well as Marta Ramirez 50 years ago. And so, and to, the evolution of ASPIDA to today becoming one of the largest network of charter school, high schools, is really, is a great achievement to this organization. And I'm so proud that Fernando Grillo, under his leadership, he was able to save that organization that after 40 some years was at the blink of disappearing. So, again, thank you to all of the Aspirantes and students who are here today, and thank you to the leadership for, for your commitment, because all these leaders work for free, and the board, and it's hard, as we all know, to keep alive any non-for-profit organization. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Madam President, I too like to thank Alderman Cardona for presenting this resolution. As a, as a graduate of ASPIDA programs, I'm very proud to associate myself with the institution, and also very proud of the amazing work that's been done over the last several decades. And it's just such a, such an honor and pleasure to be able to associate myself with this group of young people who are here with us today, who are real Aspirantes. Aspirantes means thinking about the future, thinking about how you will become successful, but not just yourself, but how you will raise up your community as well. And that's the message that I got when I was at ASPIDA. That's the message that I get when I see these young people here with us today. And I hear, I see a lot of nodding heads, so I'm very proud to be, to be associated with you. Thank you very much, again, Alderman, for presenting this.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to be associated with this resolution. You know, I'm so proud that in the 35th Ward, the neighborhood of Albany Park, in the portion of the 35th Ward, is anchored by ASPIDA Hogan, a place that opens its doors up to the entire community, that provides excellent educational opportunities for our children. ASPIDA was one of the first ASPIDA was one of the first charter school networks in the city of Chicago to recognize that when teachers have a strong voice, we have better educational outcomes. And that's why I want to really laud ASPIDA for allowing its teachers to unionize, for recognizing their right to have a union contract and to have a voice in the workplace. ASPIDA has touched so many Chicagoans' lives in so many different ways. At Whitney Young High School, there was a chapter of ASPIDA, and it was because of that chapter of ASPIDA that the annual Latino Heritage Celebration came known as SLA, Somos Latinos Aspirantes. And there's probably some Whitney Young graduates that don't quite realize that the name of our Latino Heritage Celebration comes from ASPIDA. So the story of ASPIDA is truly the story of Chicago, of people that want to come together to improve their communities, to improve their lives. I'm so proud to have an ASPIDA school in my ward. I'm so proud to be associated with this organization. And I will also say that the services and extracurricular activities that my cousin receives as an ASPIDA student are astounding and amazing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman. And we just want to say thank you for all the hard work and the sacrifices that you've made and continue moving forward in our city. Thank you very much for being here. Do you want, I'm sorry, Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I would be remiss if I did not say something about ASPIDA and also my good friend Freddie Grillo. You know, this school has been around for a long time. Not only is it Boricuas going to ASPIDA, there's also Morenos going to ASPIDA also. So it's not just a Puerto Rican school, it's a black school too. So you know, we all family, man. Don't forget about us, right? See? We all family. We all, all brothers of the struggle, man, right? So I just want to congratulate ASPIDA on what they have been doing in our community. At one time, I had, you know, I had the opportunity to try to help ASPIDA open up a school in my ward. We didn't quite get there. There has been many people who have worked in City Hall, that have passed through this building, that have worked for ASPIDA. A lot of people who care about folks from the community to get a good education, from people that look like them, and speak like them, and talk like them. So I just want to commend everyone that's involved and that have been involved in helping this school to help create some good citizens in our society. Congratulations to you, Freddie. You always, you never fail to surprise me, man. You and my man Edgar, you always giving back to the community. God bless you. Dios de Vendeiga, man.
Thank you. And before we move on to the next item on the agenda, I also want to recognize a group of sergeants from the Chicago Police Department who are here. Maybe you'll stand and be recognized. They are part of a new They are part of a new leadership training class that has been restarted by the CPD after a long hiatus. I say all the time, and I think this is true, that in some ways, the sergeants are the most important supervisors in the entire department, because on a day-to-day basis, you're going to touch more personnel than anyone else, and really, the culture of the department lies with you. So I hope you soak up this opportunity and all the learning that you're getting, and we look forward to great things from all of you. You are going to be the future leaders of this department, so thank you for being here. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move to suspend the rules to accept an additional mayoral introduction.
Madam Clerk.
To the Honorable Members of the City Council, ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the Budget Director, I transmit with here with an ordinance amending the 2020 Budget Recommendations. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Verily, truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor. Refer to the Committee on Budget.
Madam Clerk, new business. Please call the roll.
Claims, free permits, license fee exemptions, which are referred to the Committee on Finance. Zoning amendments, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Traffic regulations, traffic control signals, and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Grants of privilege on and over the public way, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. An exemption from physical barrier requirement for commercial driveway alley access for parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Hopkins has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman King has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards.
Pardon me, Mr. Clerk. Let me, the Chair recognizes Alderman Hopkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to request leave to be added as an affirmative vote on the first favorable roll call motion in the Committee on Finance and a no vote on the subsequent motion to reconsider.
Thank you, sir. Please proceed.
Alderman King has proposed order for the issuance of a permit for signed signboards at 650 South Clark Street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Hairston and others have proposed resolution to call for hearings on women's roles in the cannabis industry, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Sawyer has proposed ordinance for a transfer of funds for the Committee on Health and Human Relations for the year 2019, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Thompson has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 1432 South Clinton Street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Burke has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 4760 South Kedzie Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Tabarez has proposed ordinance for designation of the 35th Precinct of the 23rd Ward as a restricted residential zone prohibiting additional shared housing units and vacation rentals, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Tabarez also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Burnett has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code titles 4 and 7 concerning mobile food truck and vehicle distribution, which is referred to Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Alderman Irvin has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 1558 South Western Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Telfiero has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 4-60-023 to allow additional package goods licenses on portions of West North Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Telfiero also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 4-60-023 to allow additional package goods licenses on portions of West Madison Street, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. And a proposed resolution to call for hearings on the implementation of electronic signature system for use by Alderman when co-sponsoring legislation, which is referred to Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Wagasback has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 9-115-100 and 9-115-150 to further regulate requirements for transportation network vehicles and drivers, which is referred to Committee on Finance. Alderman Ramirez-Rosa has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Ramirez-Rosa and Alderman Laspada have proposed ordinance for non-ary street designation as Martha Ramos Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Viegas has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 13-64-150 to further regulate standards for installation of smoke alarms and smoke detectors, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Viegas also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 2-152-110 designating the 11th day of November as Veterans Day, which is referred to Committee on Workforce Development. Alderman Viegas also has proposed ordinance for an annual appropriation ordinance 2020 amendment within Fund 0100 for the Department of Planning and Development and the Neighborhood Opportunity Fund, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Mitz has proposed ordinance for a transfer of funds for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection for the year 2019, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Mitz and others have proposed resolution to call for hearings on improving operational efficiencies of Chicago Shared Housing Ordinance, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Spazato has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 4-60-023 to allow additional package goods licenses on portion of North Nurgansett Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Nugent has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Riley has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signs/lineboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Smith and others have proposed resolution to call on the Eleanor Congressional delegation to co-sponsor and support passage of House Resolution 4232 concerning internet-based platform accountability, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Tony has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Gardner has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Kapelman has proposed order for the issuance of a permit for signed signboards at 1106 West Lawrence Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Martin has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 4-60-022 to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of West Irving Park Road, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Laspada and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section 2-4-055 concerning chief sustainability officers' responsibilities, which is referred to Committee on Finance. Alderman Laspada and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code chapter 2-32 by adding a new section 2-32-045 entitled Chicago Municipal Banking Act, which is referred to Committee on Finance. Alderman Laspada and others also have proposed resolution to call for the Eleanor General Assembly to pass Cook County Assessors Data Modernization Act, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Cardenas has proposed resolution to call for re-establishment of the City of Chicago Department of Environment, which is referred to Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy. Alderman Maldonado and Alderman Rodriguez have proposed resolution initiating and authorizing a referendum question to be submitted to the voters of the city of Chicago at the next regular election concerning whether the city of Chicago should impose a real estate tax decrease in order to establish a new transfer tax rate, which is referred to Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Burnett has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 333 North Green Street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Irvin has proposed ordinance for non-ary street designation as Reverend Homer Gardner Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Smith and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code chapter 2-156 by modifying various sections concerning requirements for lobbyists, which is referred to Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight. Alderman Riley and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code chapter 8-4 by adding a new section 8-4-305 concerning unlawful representation of network drivers, which is referred to Committee on Public Safety. Alderman Irvin has proposed ordinance for designating a portion of West Warren Boulevard as New Quarter, as New Greater St. John Community NBC, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. And Alderman Burnett has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards.
Before we move on to other business, I want to recognize our friend and mayor from Waukegan, Mayor Cunningham, who is visiting with us today, and just thank you again for coming and your partnership, and we look forward to working together with you. Well, we have one more.
And Alderman Riley and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of chapters 2-156 and 4-6 of the municipal code regarding expediter company ethics education seminars, which is referred to Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight.
Now you're done. Okay. The Chair recognizes Alderman Ramirez-Rosa.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I rise to just offer a quick point of information. I think I'd be remiss if we did not recognize that today is our colleague Rosanna Rodriguez's birthday.
Ah.
So happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Alderman. Thank you. Did you bring the cake?
Bye, colleague.
All right. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell for approval of the journal.
Madam President, I am not aware of any corrections for the journal and move that it be approved.
All those in favor of approving the journal signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. The motion is carried. Unfinished business, Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I'm not aware of any unfinished business.
Miscellaneous business.
Madam President, I'm not aware of any miscellaneous business.
The date and time of the next council meeting, Alderman Mitchell.
I've handed up an ordinance to the clerk setting the date and time for the next meeting.
Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Alderman Mitchell has an ordinance setting the date and time of the next meeting of the City Council of the city of Chicago for Wednesday, November 20, 2019, at 10:00 a.m. in the City Council Chamber in City Hall.
All right. Hearing no objection, so ordered. Roll call on the omnibus.
Alderman Laspada, Alderman Hopkins, Alderman Dowell, Alderman King, Alderman Hairston, Alderman Sawyer, Alderman Mitchell, Alderman Harris, Alderman Beal, Alderman Salasque Garza, Alderman Thompson, Alderman Cardenas, Alderman Quinn, Alderman Burke, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Coleman, Alderman Moore, Alderman Curtis, Alderman O'Shea, Alderman Taylor, Alderman Brookins, Alderman Rodriguez, Alderman Tabarez, Alderman Scott, Alderman Secha Lopez, Alderman Maldonado, Alderman Burnett, Alderman Irvin, Alderman Telfiero, Alderman Roboyas, Alderman Cardona, Alderman Wagasback, Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez, Alderman Austin, Alderman Ramirez-Rosa, Alderman Viegas, Alderman Mitz, Alderman Spazato, Alderman Nugent, Alderman Vasquez, Alderman Palatano, Alderman Riley, Alderman Smith, Alderman Tony, Alderman Gardner, Alderman Kapelman, Alderman Martin, Alderman Osterman, Alderman Haddon, Alderman Silverstein.
On the omnibus, there are 48 yays, zero nays. The matter and the ominous are past. Alderman Thompson.
Madam President, motion reconsider the vote.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion fails. The council will come to order. The Chair recognizes Chairman Dowell of the Budget Committee.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I move to go out of the regular order of business in order to conduct the public hearing on the proposed executive budget.
On the motion to go out of order of the regular business, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say no. The motion passes. The time is now 11:48. The clerk will read the notice of the public hearing.
The following official notice of a public hearing on the budget document of the city of Chicago of the year 2020 was published in the Chicago Sun-Times on November 1, 2019. Public notice is hereby given that the executive budget of the city of Chicago for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2020, was received in the office of the city clerk for Mayor Lori E. Lightfoot on October 23, 2019, and was submitted by the Honorable Lori E. Lightfoot, Mayor, to the City Council of the city of Chicago at a special meeting, city council meeting, held on October 23, 2019. The budget document is a pamphlet form and available for inspection in the office of the city clerk in the Hailed Washington Library Center of the city of Chicago. Public notice is hereby further given that a public hearing on the executive budget will be held on Wednesday, November 13, 2019, at 11:30 a.m. in the City Council Chamber, Second Floor, City Hall, 121 North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. If you require specific language accommodations, including ASL interpreting, please email Office of New Americans at cityofchicago.org by November 10, 2019. Dated at Chicago, Illinois, this first day of the November 2019, Andrea M. Valencia, City Clerk, City of Chicago.
Any person who wishes to testify should sign one of the witness slips provided by the sergeant-at-arms. Please note specifically on your slip the topic you wish to address, as we will seek to group speakers by topic. The sergeant-at-arms will collect the slips and bring them to the rostrum, and we will stand at ease for a moment for the collection of the witness slips. All right. What I would ask is that the witnesses whose names are called come sit in the well so that you can testify directly to members of the city council. The first witness is Adrian Alexander, representing ASME Council 31. Adrian here. Adrian here? Yeah, you can sit right there, or you can, yeah, wherever you want, and speak into that.
Good afternoon, Alderman Mayor Lightfoot. My name is Adrian Alexander. I'm the Director of Intergovernmental Affairs for Asme Council 31. Asme represents almost 4,000 city employees in every single department and 10,000 workers who call Chicago home and have a stake in this budget and the actions this body takes. We are pleased there are no layoffs and that the city is making investments to meet critical needs. Our biggest concern with this budget is how the new mental health funding is allocated. CDPH and Asme agree. There are far too many people who want mental health services and currently do not receive them. CDPH has said on multiple occasions that knowing where to get services and concern about whether insurance will cover such services are the biggest impediments to receiving care. We believe, given the years of disinvestment in the public clinics and the fact that there are no waits and no costs with that new money specifically dedicated to mental health, now is the time to renew our investment in the public, city-run, mental health clinics. We appreciate the work of many of you have done to highlight the issue. We're glad the mayor and her team have made some changes to their initial plan, though only 10% of the funding is going to public clinics. We hope to continue this conversation over the next week or so. We recognize there's an effort in this budget to ensure CPD-related administrative functions are performed by administrative staff. As the union that represents these civilians and has advocated for this over the years, we look forward to these efforts and hope that you'll continue to monitor it as it goes forward, just as you've highlighted changes in caps where we also represent people. Lastly, our union in the capacity of representing taxi drivers is part of a coalition with rideshare drivers, taxi companies, and livery drivers. We have presented ideas to the mayor's team about how to level the paying field. We're seeking a tax squarely on the big companies, a cap on the number of rideshare driver licenses, and policies that recognize taxi drivers' need relief. We're glad the mayor's rhetoric takes on the companies in a way that the previous administration did not, but we want to make sure we're involved in planning the necessary next steps to ensure we're able to make a concrete difference in both taxi and rideshare drivers' lives. We look forward to being a partner in solving these issues. Our union recognizes we can't meet our obligations or the needs of our communities without additional revenue. We support Mayor Lightfoot's efforts to raise new revenue and are prepared to do all we can to make sure it succeeds. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Matt Jones, and then I would ask Nomorio Coro to come down, and you'll be on deck after that. Matt Jones, and then Nomorio Coro. Are you Mr. Jones? Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Hello, welcome. Thank you. My name is Matt Jones. I am a professional server here in Chicago, and I'm talking about saving our tips. I have been a server in Chicago for 20-plus years. I am a single father, trying to raise a young boy, being a server on those tips. The proposal to take away my tips will greatly affect my livelihood, but also that of my son. I'm at a fine dining restaurant here in Chicago that allows me for higher tips via the higher check averages. This is not by chance. I worked hard to get to this restaurant, to get to this level as a server. For that to be taken away from me to make the field level, or whatever the instance is, I find to be egregious and unfair. And I chose to work hard to obtain this level. I've worked at the restaurants that pay the $15 an hour that is the proposal, and I chose not to be at that level. I prepared, I put the work in, and now I'm being penalized for that. I equate it to Major League Baseball. You know, you work hard and you make your ways to make your way to being a professional, and I denounced myself as a or claimed to be a professional server. I made it to the top level. The people down in the lower levels on minor league, why should that pay if I'm making 10 times that? Why should I have to go down? I worked hard to get to the level I'm at. And that's all I got. I aspire to be, I enjoy the position I'm at, and I hope that's not taken away. Thank you.
The chair recognizes Alderman Salaske Garza.
Thank you, Madam President. Point of information, sir, thank you so much for speaking. The ordinance does not take your tips away. What the original ordinance says was $15 with tips on top. So that's misinformation that you've been given. No one is trying to take your tips away. This administration is not trying to take your tips away. The ordinance is not trying to take your tips away.
Okay, well, to make that an hourly flat rate, I make more than that.
That's not what the ordinance says. It raises yours, it raises the percentage, it raises your minimum wage up with tips on top. So even if it was $15 an hour, you would still be making $15 an hour with tips on top of that.
Great, but I make more than $15 an hour with tips on top of that now.
Alderman Tony. Hold on one second, sir.
We could argue this till the cows, we could argue this till the cows come home, okay? I appreciate you coming down and understanding that we are respectful of the service industry and the tipping profession and the work that you've made as a career, and I have done more of the same thing. The unintended consequence of this, if this was to move with the original ordinance, is that you would, the employer would make a decision to add a service charge to the there and then negotiate what your fixed hourly salary would be. So you would ultimately, the unintended consequences is to destroy the tipped server and for you to go to a flat rate with benefits and such and such. That's the unintended consequence, or the intended consequence, in my opinion, as an employer, because I know what I would do in order to keep you employed, and I understand the tipping for 50 years. So I understand you've chosen this as a profession, you are comfortable with it, and I am comfortable as the employer to have my servers know that tips means to ensure proper service and to give 120% to make sure that your customers are there for you as your compensation and for me to keep the doors open. That's what this issue is about.
Thank you. So we'll take two more comments, but this is really the time intended for public comment and not for Alderman to comment, so I will, the chair will recognize Alderman King briefly, please.
Madam President, I appreciate, and I appreciate you coming down, but I think it should be information and not information that you're given. And so the idea, first of all, is the proposal on the table is to slowly increase the subminimum wage. The proposal that the Restaurant Association has on the table is quickly increasing the subminimum wage by $3 over two years. Our proposal is to slowly increase the subminimum wage, which people are calling tipped wages, and so they're saying we're trying to get rid of tips. We're not trying to do that. We're trying to bring parity to an institution that has and it's built on sexism and racism. And so that's where we are, and I just want to give you that. And to Alderman Tony's point, industries in California, and New York, and other states, Minnesota, and Alaska, that have gone to that, their industry has, on average, an increase in tips and an increase in the industry on average. So if you do your homework, you'll see that the proposals on the table are slowly, gradually, over eight years, to increase the subminimum wage, which is currently at 640, and the majority of people who are making that are predominantly women, women of color, and 50% of them are on food stamps.
Thank you, Alderman King.
So we're trying to bring the working class out of that situation that they're in. So at least
Thank you.
...speak to the facts. That's all I would say.
All right. Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Nomorio Coro. Thank you. And then the speaker after that will be Deanna Phillips. I'd ask you to come down.
My name is Nomorio Coro. On the same subject, first of all, I thought, I think it's overwhelming sometimes to be in this stage and understanding all the most important issues that you have to deal with. And this is just in reference to the same issue that we, my college, just spoke about. They were here to, I guess, get more information and just make sure that our wages that are basically based on tips stay safe. And like the lady just mentioned, we needed more information, and we just clarified that that since we made a way of living on this, it will end or way of live, excuse me, way of life, and we have to look for something else to do. But we are just in support of keeping the tip wages and does not take them away from the restaurant industry, especially at the level of service that we provide. Thank you very much, and thank you, have a nice day.
Our next speaker is Deanna Phillips, and then after that will be Andrew Hill. Mr. Hill, will you please come down to the well? Go ahead, Ms.
I'm Mayor Lightfoot in the City Council. My name is Davana Phillips, and I am a civilian currently employed with Chicago at its alternate response section, better known as non-emergency 311. Over the past three years, I've had the pleasure and duty of assisting my fellow citizens in this role. I'd like to give a little background, if I may. In the year of 2016, the City of Chicago, seeking to boost police presence on the streets in order to combat crime and following a recommendation of the Internationals General's Office, Inspector General's Office, rather, hired approximately 105 civilian employees to function in a role that was typically manned by civilian, by sworn personnel or police officers. This group of civilians that were hired are educated, reliable, well-trained, hard-working, willing to help, willing to assist, and energetic. Under the direction of the Chicago Police Department, the move of hiring civilians to this role was successful, and it allowed police who were ready for full duty to head back to the streets. The OMC reassigned approximately 50 of the civilian employees in 2017. In 2019, the OMC temporarily took another 25 of the civilian employees from the alternate response section, Chicago Police 311 Non-Emergency. This has severely hurt our ability to quickly and efficiently answer calls from the citizens. The OMC is now trying to permanently take those 25 that were temporarily assigned, as well as take the other 25 remaining civilians at 311 Non-Emergency Police. This move is hurtful to the citizens of the city. Please allow me to give you a few numbers to explain. In July of 2019, before that, those 25 were taken to the OMC, alternate response answered 52,730 phone calls. 3,592 of those calls were abandoned, a 6% abandonment rate, and generated 7,119 various police reports. In September of 2019, since those 25 were taken over to the OMC, we answered 29,958 calls, abandoned 8,622 calls, which jumped the rate from 6 to 22, and took 5,338 police reports. These numbers have continued to worsen since then. We asked that, when considering the budget, you consider to allow the remaining 50 civilian employees at alternate response, Chicago Police 311 Non-Emergency, to stay in that role. The city is pushing to have citizens turn to 311 to address a multitude of needs. It would be in the best interest of the city to have well-trained staff answering those phones, taking those police reports, giving proper and correct information. This is a role that we have come to love and have come to grown, and we get better at it each and every day. Instead of taking those citizens and civilian employees that were trained, the city, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Andrew Hill, I think speaking on the same topic.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you for having me.
One second, I'm sorry, Mr. Hill. Our next speaker after Mr. Hill will be Kevin Jackson. Kevin Jackson, can you please come down and sit in the well? Please proceed, Mr. Hill.
Okay, my name is Andrew Hill. I am also PCO call taker for the Chicago Police dotted emergency line. Wanted to speak on the same topic. The current budget proposal deletes our position. We service, we want to first establish what we do. We allow officers on the street to handle high maintenance situations. They don't have to be boggled down with a burglary report or something that simply just needs paperwork to be done. They can do it through us, and we've been doing very, very good at it. The OMC is looking to, as Ms. Phillips just said, to take the remaining bodies, but it's not taking into consideration that if a car is stolen and you're waiting 20 minutes on the phone for someone to answer the call to report it stolen, and the officer pulls that car over, it can, in a bad way. We need for crimes to be reported in a timely manner and fast as possible. It's very important. You rarely find city employees that love their jobs like we do. We've integrated with the police. It's kind of fixed that barrier, you know? We understand more and we're able to actually spread this knowledge to the community, hey, hey, we're, call here. Let the officer be available for when someone's shooting. September, when the Popeyes Chicken Sandwich came out, they just shot up the Popeyes while me and my 11-year-old son was in there. I don't need officers on the phone, I don't need people holding on the phone waiting to report this. I need officers Johnny on the spot, just like they were. And when I go to work, I think about that, and I know that I contribute to that, okay? And secondly, the OMC doesn't need bodies per se, they have a lot of bodies there that aren't working in the PCO-1 capacity. They need a whole culture change, a whole workload change. They need to, I was here for the proposal for OMC, and the council was very complimentary of them. Maybe just speak to some of the people that work there and see if it changes, okay? I've sit there and I work, and I see people overworked. And April 28th, 2005, my son passed away, a C-IT in his crib in a daycare, and I sit at work, when I do go to help the OMC taking 911 calls, and I wonder, did the person that took that call, were they working an 18-hour shift? Did they not want to be at work? Were they being overworked because the next person is an FMLA abuser? So I just asked the city, the city council, and the mayor to keep in mind the service we provide, how important our job is, and how much we enjoy providing that service. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Kevin Johnson, and then after him will be Lawrence Massal.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lightfoot and members of the City Council.
Good afternoon, sir.
My name's Kevin Jackson with the Chicago Rehab Network. We were founded in 1977 by the nonprofit community development corporations who are committed to affordable housing, and we have 36 members in the city today. We emailed each of the councilmen our comments, and I will be glad to provide them by paper as well. There's four key budget findings in the housing component that we wanted to share with you. The first one, the Department of Housing will receive over $10 million more in corporate funds than in 2019, with these funds targeted for the flexible subsidy pool and low-income housing trust fund programs. While an improvement, this allocation of corporate funds is still a reduction from the 2008 high appropriation of $32.3 million, which severely limits the resources that are needed to meet an affordable housing shortfall of 120,000 homes. And we have a graph of that for you in our report. Second, the Chicago Low Income Housing Trust Fund is level funded at $5.7 million, according to the appropriation document. This should be significantly higher, however, as the Affordable Housing Opportunity Fund is projected to bring in $44.3 million in fee revenue, with 50% of this being dedicated to the Chicago Low Income Housing Trust Fund during 2020. Overall, funding for the delegate agencies, key neighborhood partners, leading service delivery and development strategies is increased by almost $50 million, which is in our by almost $50 million, which is in our table number one. And finally, revenue from the real estate transfer tax is projected at a robust $202 million. $64 million of this is appropriated to the Chicago Transit Authority with no dollars dedicated to residential real estate activities. We think that could be an improvement. We also recognize that in the coming year, we'd like to see a dedicated bond approach to affordable housing to meet the need because it's such a fundamental focus for our city and for its future and who gets to live in the city and its sustainability. This body in the 90s, in the 2000s, and in 2010 has passed significant affordable housing initiatives. We look to work with you and one Chicago to do that again. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And you did say that you are sending copies of this to individual order. Thank you very much. Our final speaker is Lawrence Massal of the Civic Federation.
Thank you, Mayor Lightfoot, Chairman Dowell, Chairman Wagasbeck, and members of the City Council. I am Lawrence Massal, the President of the Civic Federation, 125-year-old nonpartisan government research organization. Our members come from the major corporations, institutions, and service firms of metropolitan Chicago. We greatly appreciate the opportunity to comment on the city's proposed 2020 budget. A full copy of our 103-page analysis has been delivered to you and to your staff and is available for free on our website at civicfed.org. The Civic Federation is pleased to support Mayor Lightfoot's proposed fiscal year 2020 budget of $9.9 billion because we think it is a creative and reasonable plan to close the $838 million operating budget deficit that does not rely on an excessive general income tax, I'm sorry, a general tax increase, and instead incorporates a number of savings and efficiencies and modernizations and relies on limited and targeted taxes and fee increases. While the Civic Federation is pleased to support this budget proposal, it's important for this body to know that there is little room in this plan for error and does rely on some aggressive assumptions, including the level of assistance from the state and federal government, some of which has not yet been finalized or finally approved by those governments. The Civic Federation is particularly concerned about two items that are still pending approval. That's the $133 million in ambulance transport expense reimbursements from the federal government that was submitted by the state but has not been approved by the federal government, and the $50 million in graduated real estate transfer tax, which requires authorization in Springfield. And we are pleased and understand that progress is being made, and if that progress is not made, that the mayor is planning to introduce a revised budget with additional savings to replace that loss of revenue. The Federation is further concerned that this budget does rely on one-time revenue sources that include a record $74 million in TIF surplus and at least $200 million in upfront savings from the debt refinancing. The use of one-time revenue sources to close an operating deficit is not ideal, but it, because it means that the structural deficit gap will persist in that amount in future years. Of immediate concern is the reality that, as I said, there is little room for error and many of the gap-closing measures remain, at this point, not fully resolved and include one-time revenues. This is troubling considering that the City of Chicago faces continued financial challenges in the near future. As part of the budget, the city will make actuarially calculated contributions to the police and fire pension funds. This increase was a significant driver in the large 2020 budget deficit.
President, I would request that we allow, question or Mr. Massal to continue. We just received this report and given what the Civic Federation has done for the city, the history, I'd prefer, or I would ask that we listen to the remainder of his analysis.
Thank you very much. The move to the actuarial contributions for police and fire pension funds was a significant driver in the large 2020 budget deficit. In two years, in fiscal year 2020, the city will face another large jump in pension contributions when it begins to make the actuarially calculated contributions to the municipal and laborers fund. In order for these new funding schedules to fulfill their purpose of putting the city's funds on a more sustainable path, it's imperative that the city develop a long-term funding plan. The development of a rational, reliable plan for future-year pension funding is probably the most important job that this body and this administration face. In addition to developing a long-term plan, the Civic Federation recommends that the City Council and the mayor work with Governor Pritzker's Pension Consolidation Task Force to explore the consolidation of Chicago's Public Safety Pension Funds into the efforts that are going on right now in Springfield to combine the downstate and suburban police and fire funds. They also urge you to seek sustainable collective bargaining agreements and to evaluate whether TIF carve-outs are an option for the TIF districts that are generating revenue that is used, declared in a surplus, but could be returned to the general tax base. Thank you for this opportunity to comment, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Lawrence, I just wanted to publicly thank you for working so freely and sharing your thoughts regarding this budget as a new budget chair. And I just wanted to acknowledge that to all of my colleagues about how helpful you've been. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Can you elaborate when you say annually reassess the garbage collection fee to then ensure the revenues are aligned with expenses?
I'm, sure. As we articulated in that report, we think it was an important move to begin to tie the collection of garbage and recycling to an actual fee. I think the recommendation is really based on looking at whether we're covering the full cost of that. It is a way to free up what has traditionally been funded by other state, other city revenues, whether it be a property tax or other taxes, to basically tie that in. I think there's also the real opportunity to build on the success of recycling and taking things out of the waste stream to reduce the cost, to really get to a volume-based fee.
Alderman Irvin.
I'm sorry.
Alderman Irvin.
Apologize. You talk about a sustainable revenue source. What, you know, our, our ability is limited on what we can raise revenue from. I'm just interested to hear what, what you all's thought is as relates to sustainable, long-term revenue source for ongoing expenses. Our expenses, year over year, continue to grow as salaries grow. I mean, most of what we do is personnel-based. So help us to, with ideas that you all may have for long-term sustainable revenue.
Sure. So a sustainable, long-term revenue source is one that grows, grows at least with inflation, one that basically doesn't create economic distortions, doesn't drive people out of the city, doesn't basically end up, that is much more reliable, much more reliable. We point that while the legalization of marijuana and this body's decision to tax marijuana and allow for it is, while it's rather a small amount of revenue, it's inherently an unreliable source of revenue. Gambling as well is a very unreliable source of revenue. If you look at what has occurred in the state of Illinois as we have gone forward with expansions, whether it's casinos or video poker, or now as we enter into sports gambling, it's a pretty uneven revenue source. The base revenues for municipalities, including the City of Chicago, is the property tax. It is, one of the reasons why it is the most reliable is that it's also the most painful for the people. You can't get around paying, paying it. So when we look at reliability, we don't look at tax or sustainability. We don't look at taxes in the abstract, although there are ways to measure them. It's, it has to be a balance. And for the city budget to be sustainable and finances to be sustainable, we have to be looking at ways to reduce costs through modernization, through consolidation, through better delivery of services, and also have a revenue that allows you to pay your bills to make the investments that you need.
So again, what does that, so is your answer to that question, property taxes? Or?
The property taxes have the ability to be reliable, but when they're excessive, they're not sustainable. The sales tax, which you have control over, we have the highest sales tax rate in the United States of any major city. And we're seeing changes in people's buying patterns. So those are not as sustainable as, as they were in the past. The best tax from a tax, straight tax policy issue is the lowest rate across the broadest base. That's why so many solutions require the engagement of Springfield and the state legislature. If we were going to expand sales tax to include services, as have been proposed, that would need action from the state legislature.
Is that, but is that what you're recommending? My question is, what are you recommending for long-term, sustainable source of revenue to deal with? We've done a pretty good job of reducing expenses and we've cut down to, just about to the bone on some of this stuff. And at some point, either we have to start cutting services, or we have to find ways to keep our revenue at pace with the growth of the expenses. So again, if it's, if it's expanding the sales tax base, if it's the property taxes, whatever those things are, I'm just interested to hear what the Civic Federation's thoughts are on those issues. And if there, if there's something we haven't discussed, that you have an idea that we can, that we can think on and potentially enact with the help of Springfield or enact locally?
Right. So it just can't be that, and I can't accept that you're cut to the bone and that there's no more efficiencies that can be wrung out of city government. We need to modernize city government. And there are some things in the mayor's budget proposal that is, identifies some of that modernization. In the case of the administrative functions related to the police and fire department, that would be a modernization. That should have some cost savings and some efficiencies. There is consolidation of, and a recognition of what services are really key and who provides them. But in terms of sustainable tax increases, the reality is we have a population challenge in the City of Chicago. We are losing population. And part of that challenge is that you have to make investments that keep the people that are here or, and that ideally attract them. But you can't do that all on a revenue solution. Some of the revenue solutions will further people's decision not to stay in the City of Chicago. We don't have, as a city and as a state of Illinois, very good information as to what happened to the people that left. We have some anecdotal information, but there could be a lot more information identifying why people left and where they went to. That's a challenge for groups like the Civic Federation and planning organizations. But my, the biggest point I have is that we can't be satisfied that we've wrung the efficiencies out, that we're operating as lean as we can, because we have to modernize. We have to use technology. We have to basically reduce the costs so that we can make the investments that people need and are needed to attract them.
Thank you. Thank you for your, for your comments. I think this conversation needs to.
I did think of one other thing that I would say. The fact that the state of Illinois does not, that has the most generous exemption for retirement income of any of the states, of any of the states with an income tax that we don't provide, regardless of how much money you earn in retirement, none of it goes to the Illinois income tax and thus none of it is shared with municipalities, is an, is an area that we believe should be addressed.
Good luck with that one. But again.
Did you want the easy answers?
It's not, and it's, it's a fair statement to make. But again, though, I appreciate you've always provided, you know, solid information for us to look at. And again, just wanted to hear your thoughts on, on revenue going forward. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and President. Lauren, you, you obviously have always done good analysis, you know, year after year on our budget and got good suggestions in terms of where we should go and tax and derive better efficiencies. You seem to alluding to the fact that we have this old economy type of taxation and, and the new economy has not caught up with our ability to, you know, either derive revenue from it or ability to capture its potential. Delve a little bit more into what you mean. And you're threading between the lines there, you're saying that, but expand, expand on that a little bit more so that I can understand where you're going with this.
I guess in general terms, I would point to three main factors. One, we have more units of government in Illinois and in Cook County than any other county or state in the United States. That is the definition of inefficiency in terms of how we deliver services. The City of Chicago has the benefit of one of the more efficient school districts because we have a combined district and the largest district. But there are other levels of government that all contribute to the, to the property tax bill in terms, in terms of the overall cost of the government. In terms of the revenue side in the modern economy, we're seeing more and more, and if you look around in the buildings in Chicago and just walk outside of City Hall, it's a different sort of city in terms of the, where the jobs are. It's much more service-oriented. We have basically migrated to a business support services, less in manufacturing, less in goods. The retail, what we're seeing in retail through Amazon, but through just changes, is that the sales tax base is not growing as fast as it once was. We don't capture, as many other states do, services in, related to that. So expansion in the abstract of the sales tax base to include services, recognition that we're an outlier in our state income tax, by the fastest and the most sustained demographic growth in the state of Illinois is the retirement age community. And the thought that amidst this great financial crisis, that's what's different about where we are right now than where we were 10 or 15 years ago. We have a lot of evidence that shows that we are losing people, that we're, and that why they left is not as clear, but they have left, and the impact on us by not having as broad of a population to support the tax base. So expanding your base so that it, it could be less of a rate. Sales taxes, again, if we could bring down the rate in sales tax by expanding the base, that would have advantages for people in terms of attracting business.
Thank you. I do, I do agree with you on expanding the base, which is, this is why I was breaking down the old economy with the new economy, which is something we haven't really caught up in doing that. And this is why we struggle year after year to balance the budget on taxation of the past, of things that are there, obviously, that we can get to. But it's not creative in terms of where we can go. I do, in terms of the taxation of the garbage fee, I'm at odds with it, simply because it's not equitable in terms of how it could be applied. If we break, if we break that further down, some folks, some communities, like some like mine, parts of mine, generate a new amount of garbage because it's large families. So if we move down that, that path, people are going to start arguing that we're going to charge people by the pound, which I wholly disagree. And if we go down by the menu item in terms of providing services to the city, we can go, you know, on and on to trade trimming and snow removal and paying for that, for that, which I disagree. This is why we need to expand the tax base, because in this downtown area, we provide a great significant of city resources to people from outside of this, of the city. But yet, citizens of the city pay for those services as well. So I appreciate you in this report, maybe in the next report, delve a little more detail in terms of what the services we expand to and what we move to, because I think in 2020, we got significant disadvantages as well, just as this year. But 2020, 21, we need to talk about that and how we expand that base and work on it in Springfield on those items now, not in 2021. So thank you.
Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Massal, good af, yes, good afternoon to you. I do want to commend the Civic Federation on its report. We seem to be in agreement in a number of the concerns that you have, most notably the $200 million in the upfront refinancing. The real estate transfer tax is a non-issue, but the emergency reimbursement services, I think, is one of the things that I've, I've harped on the most as of late. But I'm curious as to see, as to the reasoning for the Civic Federation not being as concerned with the significant amount of vacant positions in this budget, roughly 1,900 of them, $200 million with the taxpayer funds that are included in positions. million with the taxpayer funds that are included in positions that we have no intention of filling. Why wouldn't that not have been a concern with regard to the Civic Federation as a way of cost-saving and avoiding property taxes?
I guess I'm, you know, as we attempt to try to look at the overall budget and look at what the total increase in the number of full-time employees, we don't see it as that significant of an increase proportionally. There are, you know, in this body's role, that's really what you really are here to do, which is to do the trade-offs of where the investments should be or take place. So we didn't find it to be excessive. There are always things that we could say on paper that basically would reduce costs and reduce expenses, but we generally find this to be a reasonable approach. And I think really from what we were expecting in terms of closing such an enormous historic deficit, it spreads pretty evenly the pain of, so that there isn't a massive property tax increase. It's really on the corporate and on the operating side, it's about an $18 million increase to keep the libraries open. So that was sort of the basis.
So just so I'm clear, Mr. Masal, so 2,000 people, 2,000 positions which are fully funded is not a big concern?
Everything is a big concern when you're basically trying to close the deficit, but it's a balancing. And quite, and even more candidly, I would say, we don't have in the short amount of time that we have from when the budget is released to when this is scheduled, to dive into each position. We do ask and we candidly get very good cooperation from the CFO's office and the Budget's office to answer our questions, just as we have with previous administrations. But we did not have the ability to focus on each position and decide whether that position was essential or not.
Okay. Well, I think at some point, I'd love to see the Federation's opinion on that matter, especially when it adds $200 million to the budget. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Masal, I think what Alderman Lopez is asking is whether or not we should eliminate every vacancy in every department and whether that would actually end up with a diminution of services, which I believe most of the Aldermen in this body understand, cutting departments to the bone and eliminating every vacancy will mean that services that they depend upon, that their constituents depend upon, would actually be severely impacted, which we've explained multiple times. But Alderman Vazquez.
Thank you, Madam President. So I had a couple of questions and I'm very interested in this conversation because it appears to me that when you were answering Alderman, Jason Irving's questioning, you were like, we need to cut, cut, cut more. And yet, when Alderman Lopez is asking where to cut, what you're saying is that you didn't have the time to look and figure that out and you would want more?
No.
Time to actually delve in?
No, we basically believe in sort of a balanced approach. It is what time we have as an outside group to basically evaluate the entirety of the spending plan, that $9.9 billion spending plan. You can offer ideas and we'd be happy to review them as to what the impact of those kind of additional cuts. We have ideas in the abstract of things that you could cut, but I think the idea of that because there are vacancies in the budget, right, that all of those vacancies are unnecessary or that those vacancies wouldn't have an impact.
If you don't mind, what you said was, I would have preferred more time to delve in to actually look at that, correct?
Yeah, in the abstract, I'd appreciate six months to go through the budget and go through an analysis, but we don't have that. We have...
Alderman, I would just ask, as a courtesy to our guests, that you allow them to finish speaking before you interject with the next question. Go ahead, Mr. Masal.
So, yeah, it's not, I'm not saying that you can't eliminate vacancies. It wasn't the part, it wasn't the focus of where we were. We heard reasonable explanations from the mayor's budget office and the chief financial officer's office as terms of what the headcount was. We were able to track in the appropriations bills what the level of staffing was, but we don't have the level, just we're a relatively small staff at the Civic Federation and the amount of time it takes to evaluate every opening. But we also recognize that there has been reductions in other areas of the budget. So, yeah, from our standpoint, from an outside business-supported organization, it's a reasonable plan. It could certainly, other areas could be offered an improvement, but we think overall what we see is it's, especially the amount of time that the administration had to put the budget together and how it doesn't rely on general tax increases or, and also doesn't rely on unproven revenue sources as a means of supporting the level of spending.
Okay. Is that the answer? That's a completed answer so I can ask the next question? So if that's the case, and I do appreciate that, part of what Alderman Cardenas was saying is if you're noticing that there's different trends in transactions, in patterns, in spending, and we're trying to figure out creative ways to actually raise revenue, looking at both city and state level, what do you think has the highest level of transaction speed rate? What's growing that we can actually tax to get revenue?
Retirement income, right? If you look at the demographics of our state, it's an aging population. We have an obscene exemption for a state that has $13 billion in unpaid bills, for a state that's cutting its revenue sharing to local governments to not be recognizing that population. That would be one. Services, you can make the case that we don't broadly tax sales, we don't capture the services in terms of our sales tax base. But again, that, as you point out, requires action from Springfield in our legislature.
Okay. Yeah, I know we need new money, but it won't be from old folks. So thank you for that.
Rich old folks are okay. We can skip them. I mean, because I think you're oversimplifying and not dealing with, when you want to have an evidence-based approach and you look where Illinois is, we are, you know, as everyone struggles to figure out where there is revenue, the way we're going to fix the state and the city of Chicago is there's going to have to be shared sacrifice.
Chair recognizes Alderman Osterman.
Lawrence, I appreciate your candor, your analysis. You're a resource to us, right? The Civic Federation doesn't have to do this. You do it because it's what you guys have always done and you provide us the best possible options based on your experience and your analysis. All 50 of us were elected to do that work and make those calls about which way to go, taxes, not taxes, cuts, no cuts. So I appreciate your ongoing analysis on that. And I think part of this body and the diverse makeup of it, we want to look for revenue options for the future. And I think part of, after this budget, kind of working more closely with you and others in Chicago to talk about growth opportunities with revenue, I think that would be a good exercise so that we're not doing this next August, September, but we're doing it kind of throughout the year, which is what we're going to need. My one question, it's more if you can get back to me, you brought up a really critical point about population and how it relates to taxing and our budget and where we are as a city. I'd be curious to know, kind of a range, if you guys have done an analysis of if you have X amount more Chicagoans, ballpark what revenue that would bring to, you know, and I'm not asking you for, to give me a dollar amount now, but as we look at population growth and what we've lost, you know, it was announced yesterday about 6,000 students have gone down. I had breakfast with principals yesterday who've lost students because of the work shortage with CPS. So that's a constant issue in all of our communities. I think, I'd be curious to know if you have analysis or if you could put that together of if we were to add more people, if we get 10,000 more, 50,000 more, 100,000 more Chicagoans, what that would mean for our tax base.
I'd be happy to follow up with that. There are just a couple of things. One, intuitively, I think everyone would recognize that the more people that you have, the better it's going to be. I'll just give you a couple of examples. We can give you the specifics of what it means for the Chicago public schools to be losing and being forecasting to lose student population even before the strike and what that is and what that ends up costing and why that's a big challenge. In the case of the public transit, for example, I think it's a ready example, we're losing ridership on our Ls and buses. And so it's not even whether, if we gave away free rides on our Ls and buses, there would be some nominal benefit because of the federal formulas that look at your ridership and usage and determine what you qualify for. So I'd be happy to follow up with you on some of that.
The one last point I'll also bring up is you brought up retirement income, which could be a third rail to a lot of people. I think that there are millionaires and multimillionaires who are retired, who are not paying any taxes, and I think that there's a range that other states have done where it's not the retiree who is working paycheck, living paycheck to paycheck. There are those in our city who have done well and we're not taxing those. So I mean, there's a wide range that the state or the city could decide to go down. It's not about taxing, again, the little old lady who's living down the street. It's, there are ranges of people that could be taxed on their retirement income that could help towards the state that we live in and the city that we live in.
Exactly. I mean, for example, and I pointed out that the state of Illinois is one of three states with an income tax that doesn't, that exempts all retirement income. These same residents that we're so politically afraid of, many of them don't know that they don't pay state income tax on their retirement income because they pay federal income tax on their retirement income. They just don't share to the state level. And what the Civic Federation has proposed, and we never proposed tax increases in the abstract, we raised them in relation to previous state budgets, that if we merely followed the social security exemption and followed the federal model, that the state of Illinois could still exempt approximately $50,000 of retirement income and put its current rate structure, tax it at that level, the state would collect almost $2.5 billion more in revenue. You could do it for, you could set the limit at whatever you want. The fact that we're not having a meaningful debate in Springfield about that at the same time that the state is having, I would say that at this point, you would say the state has looked for creative ways in terms of gambling, in terms of marijuana and other things, but we still have a huge backlog of unpaid bills.
Thank you. Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Madam President. Good afternoon, Lawrence. Like Alderman Osterman, I want to thank you for all the hard work the Civic Federation puts into analyzing our annual budgets. And I think that your input is helpful to each of us and helps us think about the budget in a more responsible way. So thank you for your input. I just have a couple of questions. Over the last month or two, we've all been suggesting different ideas to help either manage costs or find efficiencies or find a new revenue stream to help balance this massive deficit that we're confronting. And I'm curious if you could just briefly weigh in on a few of the proposals that have been floated in the last couple of months to give the Civic Federation's view on those that appreciate it. The first one is an issue that Alderman Tony and I worked on my first year in office, and he'd been working on it long before me, and that was the elimination of the head tax in the city of Chicago. I think there are different philosophies in the city council about the impact of that tax. Personally, I think it is a penalty for creating new jobs. Does the Civic Federation have an opinion on not just bringing the head tax back, but then quadrupling it?
Well, I think it fits within the context that we need to be cognizant, that we need to attract employers and jobs to our city. And the idea that just for the privilege of having, putting your employees in the city of Chicago, you should pay some additional tax in addition to your income tax, in addition to whatever sales tax that may come if you're selling products or that your employees, if they buy anything down, that we should pay a head tax, is one that I would be, would find difficult, especially in this economic cycle, even though we have seen some significant growth in the downtown area, in the River North and in the Fulton Market in terms of development. There's question among the developers that we interact with as to what's coming next. There's a lot of uncertainty. I think a head tax would be a movement in the wrong direction to attract businesses and jobs to the city.
And you mentioned our recent success in attracting new employers to the central core and throughout the city. Could this also have the unintended consequence of sending those jobs across the border to the suburbs that ring the city?
Yeah, anytime that you're going to do something distinctly different than the surrounding jurisdictions, I think we've seen before, whether it is a local income tax or whether, what they experience in some other cities, it tends to, you have to anticipate that you're going to drive, you're going to drive businesses to look at their alternatives. I think in terms of, if you look at the real estate market in Chicago and you look at the number of large law firms, accounting firms, and I had stated about how we're becoming more of a business services, many of those larger firms that historically took many floors of many different large buildings are letting their employees work out of their home, work remotely. And so it's not guaranteed that if you put another cost on it, they won't find a way to respond, to reduce their cost and headcount.
I appreciate that response. That's something I worry about too, which is a great segue into my second question. There's also, over the past decade or so, been different variations of a revenue idea whereby the city would impose a one or two cent per transaction fee or tax on financial transactions that run through the Board of Trade and others. What is the Civic Federation's opinion on that new revenue stream?
We have asked for and have not seen any real adequate analysis of how that would actually work, given the modern system that we have. We have basically encouraged people who think those businesses are also stagnant, that they would stay. What we have seen in terms of the employment and the activity level at the exchanges themselves in terms of the trades taking place there is a dramatic reduction. Instead, it is almost all done in hyper-electronic mode. It is done in, you know, portions of a second of trading, and those businesses are not concerned about their location to the historic open outcry pit. They're just concerned about their proximity to the server. And the server may not even actually be located in the city of Chicago, or if it is, it could be moved.
Servers are portable.
I think the idea that we have a captured population that we can tax because they need to be in the city of Chicago to conduct those kind of transactions doesn't match up with what we've seen in terms of the international competition for that business.
Very good. And the last question I have on general revenue proposals is another one that's been thrown around over the last several years, and that is the creation of a city income tax. Not something I would favor, but what is the Civic Federation's position on creating a city income tax?
I think there, again...
I can tell you what I think.
I think we probably agree on that, Madam President.
I think the idea, right, that the city of Chicago is strong enough economically that it could withstand its own additional income tax, because I don't think it's going to be what you're suggesting would replace the state income tax, either the existing one or the proposed graduated tax that will take effect if the governor and his proposal is approved by the voters in November of 2020. I think you have a lot of risks associated with it. Again, because of the change in sort of our economic makeup, the need for businesses to put all of their workers in our city or to basically, and then charge an income for it, as opposed to when we saw, when New York went to an income tax, New Jersey boomed, right? When Washington DC went to it, Virginia and Maryland boomed. That doesn't mean that DC is not doing very well, but I don't think it's because it has less to do with them having an income tax and more to do with just the activity level in that city.
Well, we certainly, as a city, don't need to be creating a windfall for the suburbs that ring our town. One last question I have for you, and it's a bit of a controversial one. You point this out in your annual review of our budget, I think every year since I've been here, and you talk about the garbage collection program and the fees that are associated with it. And each year, no matter what the final total number is, it tends to work out that the taxpayer or the user is putting in about a third of the, paying a third of the cost, whereas the city's budget is subsidizing the other two-thirds of that cost. Garbage collection fees, I understand, are the third rail of Chicago politics, but we are hemorrhaging $120 million a year or so by your math. Do you have recommendations, maybe it's... Do you have recommendations, maybe it's not an immediate solution, but a midterm or long-term solution to get those numbers to better line up where we're not hemorrhaging over $100 million a year on a user-based service in the city of Chicago?
So, in the full report, we point out the need to get the full cost developed for all programs, not just the garbage and/or recycling that you would look at, but there are opportunities to really, and it's being done and experimented in other cities, where you can incent people to reduce the amount of waste that they're actually putting into the stream, and you can have a volume base for that. I, you know, there was a lot of resistance for a long time in the city of Chicago for recycling, and I think people ended up being surprised how much the general willingness is. There's a greater awareness of that. So looking at the full cost of what providing that service is, and then looking at whether you can do some things to incent people to reduce the cost of it, and then being nimble enough to, in the budget, to basically address, if you're going to reduce volume, are you able to reduce the city's cost in that collection?
Okay, well, thank you. I do have other questions, but I've asked too many already, and I know my colleagues have plenty to ask as well, but thank you, Lawrence, to you and the Civic Federation for your continued input on our budgeting. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Thompson.
You, Madam President. Lawrence, again, I echo my colleague's comments. I appreciate all the work that you do and your organization does each year, and not only do you come here and analyze a budget, but also as a resource. And so I look forward to working with, some of the ideas you mentioned, you know, a number of these, we don't have control over. For example, on the pension consolidation, I believe the mayor was supportive of that idea. I know many of us were supportive of the idea. I think the governor wasn't, and then you had some of the collective bargaining units that weren't supportive of it. Now we're maybe moving in that direction, so there might be an efficiency there that we hope that that deal can be worked out in terms of just the overall management. And I appreciate your leadership on that, because I know you and I had a conversation last year, and you were advocating for that.
Yeah, I think the promising note is that the governor had Bill Brodsky, the former head of the Mercantile Exchange and CBOE, basically chair this commission or committee that they had working, and even though they delivered their report, which didn't include Chicago and didn't go as far as we would have liked in terms of full consolidation only on the investments, the governor and Mr. Brodsky have committed that they're, even with, that they're going to go forward in addition to the legislation that they have been considered in Springfield, but the commission's going to continue. And it's sort of with the spirit of our report, that we believe the city should push forward to be included in that, to basically be looking at the benefits of consolidation, of basically having the state take on what is really a state role. Because I would challenge you, when you think about the local control you have over your pensions, to show me where you have local control over your pensions. Because it's not the city council that determines who the members of these various pension funds are, it's the state statute and state legislature. It's not the city council that even determines what kind of funding you can put in them, it's the state statute and the General Assembly. So I think there is a, there are great arguments in the interim, or the report by the mayor's, I'm sorry, by the Brodsky Commission, pointed out just how much money was being left on this table. Granted, it was limited to downstate and suburban police and fire in terms of what their lack of investment returns would be, but there are other applications in terms of savings and in terms of efficiency. And there, it would recognize the state's role in creating a lot of these obligations and hopefully improve accountability.
I think as long as there's the comfort level of representation on those boards, I think hopefully we can move on. On the retirement, taxing retirement, now you mentioned that, and we also talked about how we're losing population. There was an article in, I think it was yesterday's Wall Street Journal, talking about the number of billionaires in New York that have moved to Florida, including the President of the United States, who is now domiciled in Florida because that's a state that doesn't tax income. And Connecticut's lost 22,000 people, New York's lost 120,000 people. A lot of them are moving down to those states. If we're trying to stop people from leaving the city in the state of Illinois, and then we turn around and we talk about potentially taxing, I know it's an idea. I mean, I'd like to understand what you're talking about more and more depth, and if you have any more information, talk offline, but it just doesn't seem like, it's a little counterintuitive.
We're not trying to stop people from leaving the state of Illinois, we're trying to get people to want to stay in the state of Illinois and come to the state of Illinois. And when you can't afford the services that make your community safe or that make basically the quality of your schools, then it's not as much of an attraction. And I think for, as we debate, you know, where the state of Illinois and the city of Chicago goes forward in tax policy, to recognize that the overall Chicagoan feels like they're already paying lots of taxes is an important thing to recognize. But the issue of the exemption on retirement income, when the state of Illinois is an outlier, and the examples that you used, New York and Connecticut, they, you know, they have, they don't exempt retirement income. New York, Chicago are both older, older communities that have issues that are impacted by the feds that as well, because quite frankly, the loss of population was masked in this city and in the state for a long time because of the contributions of immigrants to come here and make up for the slow birth rate and other things. But to your point, people don't, I do not believe, and I have not seen any evidence that shows people are staying here because they're not, their retirement income isn't being taxed. Because they, as I've said, I've talked to plenty of retired teachers that are surprised to learn that they don't pay any state income tax on their retirement income. Talked to plenty of people in my family who don't understand the retirement income is exempt, because it's only exempt from state taxes. A much larger tax is applied by your federal government, and so the current 4.95% is not as impactful. But the most important thing to be looking at, which I think you make the point very well, is where are we headed demographically? We're not headed to surges of, you know, younger population that are going to be incented that someday their retirement income is not going to be. We're basically have a population that's aging, that more and more of that population is, its retirement income is not available to pay for the services that they need as well as we go forward.
Okay, well, I look forward to continuing to work with you. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Harrison.
Thank you. Thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you.
You know, we don't always agree. I hear you talk, I hear lots of people talk about shared sacrifice, but during that conversation, I only hear about taxing the people. And the people that I talk to about why they're leaving Chicago because it's too expensive to live here, it is too, we get taxed for our water, we get taxed for our bags, we got the highest tobacco tax, we got the sales tax, we got the water tax, we have all of these, we send people to the neighboring states to get basic things like water because we tax them here. And then we want to raise the property taxes, and, but we don't want to create any revenue streams, and I really don't understand that. I listened to your comments about the head tax and the businesses that would not, and we've heard that before, and that's the boogeyman. And so the communities that I represent are not at these businesses downtown, they're not hiring them downtown. The unemployment rate for people on the South Side is still high, so all of these businesses that are going to, are not going to come, they're not here anyway. And if they are, they're not on the sides where the people need the jobs. And this is in a city that is 33% black, 33% white, and 33% Hispanic. So we have to take all of that into consideration. I guess my question for you is, have you had an opportunity to look at the $3 million that we give to Gary Airport, which doesn't even have one commercial flight out of it, and stops people from the city of Chicago getting jobs? Have you had a chance to take a look at that?
Not in a long time. Have I looked at the Gary Airport?
Okay, I would be interested in getting your opinion on that, and then also on the third airport. You know, we have to be thinking about additional revenue for the next 50 years. I know it's been bantered about, and they say, oh, it's going to, you know, mess up O'Hare and Midway, and it's not. It's based on a study that was commissioned by Mayor Daley in 1986, I want to say, and they predicted the FAA, this is not Leslie, this is, it was, oh, Washington. So, okay, I was, Alderman, so you corrected me, Mayor Washington, that Chicago would be ripe for a third airport by 2020, if not sooner. We are at capacity at all of the airports, there is no more airspace. And so it's not just about jobs, but it's about airspace. I would be interested in seeing what the Federation has to say. I mean, once you take out the scary stuff, because we are the only major city that doesn't have three airports now. So would that be something that you'd be willing to look at?
Where would you build the third airport?
Well, we'd look at Bolt Field.
Pardon?
Bolt Field.
I'm not familiar with that.
Some people know it as Piattone, but it's actually Bolt Field.
Oh.
It's already an airport.
So you would revisit the Piattone. Yeah, so you're basically going, okay, yeah, I really haven't looked at that. I mean, I would say...
As an economic engine for the South Side, you know, like you mentioned in your report that we don't manufacture anything, the things that used to keep the South Side of the city healthy has all been dormant, and we have replaced it with nothing. But I would, I would like you to look at the other major cities that have the three major airports, and I'd like to look at that against the backdrop of Gary.
Yeah, I think you, the first thing, the only thing that I would think of is, will you look at any of the other major air, any of the other major cities, how far away their airport, if they have three, is from the population base? Like, so Denver, when it basically built its new airport, closed its old airport, and then built one further away and has had a lot. I'm just not aware of...
Well, yeah, I mean, and DC has three, and New York now has three, so they're, they are in, you know, suburban areas.
Yeah, but those are with a large population that uses those airports. I think Piattone's a pretty far away the last time I drove it from any large population center. Yeah, but I, yeah, it's a little bit beyond the Civic Federation, I'm happy to look at it, if you have anything you could share with me.
I do. All right, thank you.
I think that concludes our questions. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have, wish to speak on the proposed executive budget, members of the public? All right, the time is now 1:05 PM. This concludes a public hearing on the proposed executive budget. Chairman Dow.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I move to return to the regular order of business.
On the motion to return to the regular order of business, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. The motion passes. Alderman Mitchell, is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chairman. President, there being no further business for this body, I move adjournment.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. The motion is carried, council is adjourned to the next scheduled meeting. Thank you.